Of September 10th, call that to order. And there is a printed agenda for everyone who had an opportunity to look over. Is there any pecuniary interest with regards to the councilors today? Okay, one does arise, you can declare at that time. So we have a consent agenda in front of us. And let me go to my. So the consent agenda has been moved by councillor Millen and second by councillor Carlton. Are there any of those items that wish to be pulled for separate discussion later on in the committee of the whole meeting? Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to have some more discussion on I, I believe it is. It's the, it's the accessibility minutes, joint accessibility advisory committee minutes.
Okay, so that's item H. Yep. Joint accessory advisory committee minute stated August 25th.
That's right.
Okay, I'll mark you there. Okay, I'll ask one more time, are there any other items which to be pulled for separate discussion? Okay, seeing none, and that has been moved and second, and anybody opposed to those that consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, that is carried. All right, so moving forward then, let me just get my papers here. So our first for item for discussion is the social services relief fund. And Anne Marie is going to speak to that, and that is moved by councillor Hutchinson and second by councillor Woodbury. And I'm going to welcome Anne Marie to speak to report, welcome.
Good morning, Morden. Morning, council. This report is just a summary on the social services relief funds that we received back in April. And then some planned projects for some, some more funding we have received from the province. So back in April, the province put out a social services relief fund through our Chippy program, our community homelessness prevention initiative. And the funds were to go to agencies and community members that are working with people that are experiencing homelessness or vulnerable people within our community. The county received $2.3 million. On page 42, I have provided a list of the money and where we have allocated or spent the funds. We had the funding came in three separate allotments. We received a payment in April, one in June or July, sorry, and will be receiving another one for September. To date, we have received $1.7 million and we have about $46,000 remaining. And actually, since I've written or since I wrote the report, we've actually had some more requests come in, so probably less than that right now. There have been a number of great community initiatives that have helped with the increase in demand that we're seeing in our community. One of them I'm going to mention is Oshare. Oshare served 32,219 meals between March and July. And compared to last year where it was 8,700 meals. So very much a need for food security in our community. We have assisted with costs of food. We've assisted with some new freezers there, and we've also provided some funds for modifications. So that they can modify the site and get ready for the winter so that there can be takeout food provided. Right now, people are lining up outside. This will give the ability for some, some sort of a, an assembly line kind of thing inside. So people can get in out of the cold and still be provided funds for, funds for, or sorry, provided some food. We still have our isolation center set up. We do, just in case there might be a second wave, and we do have some funds allotted for that. We've been working with the United Way. We have a weekly meeting with public health, Gray and Bruce counties, the poverty task force and other agencies. And out of those meetings, there's been a number of issues and gaps for service that have been identified. And the United Way has been able to provide some of those services. Providing meals to people that were isolating in motels was certainly, or there for emergency housing was certainly one of the, the main things they've done. They provided 2,548 meals and they worked with Habitat for Humanity in order to deliver those meals. There's been lots of work for supporting frozen meals being provided through Southeast Grey Services, masks for the backpack program, and other PPE for some of our agencies that are, are providing services. Emergency housing, we funded $113,000 in emergency funding from April to July of 2020 versus $32,000 for the same time period in 2019. So we're certainly seeing a lot more people that were needing housing and needing to be housed for a longer period of time. So, so that also contributed. We are funding a reception, a reception center for the Canadian Mental Health Association. We're providing $150,000 in funding for a full-time staff person for mental health outreach services, for rent supplements and for the cost of the center for a year. Again, large increases in demands for services. The waitlist for transitional housing has grown by 75% just compared to March of this year. And the waitlist for outreach services by 625%. So again, a need for more funding when it comes to staffing and when it comes to services. So the province had announced in August, Phase Two of the social services relief funds. And these funds are to go to mitigate risk for vulnerable people in congregate care settings. So that's where more than one person is sharing a room. To encourage longer-term housing solutions for those that are experiencing homelessness and to enhance rent assistance to households with rent arrears due to COVID-19. There is concern with the province and with ourselves that once SERB is no longer, that there will be people that still will not be back to work and therefore will not be able to, to pay for their rent. So the province has provided some funds. Now, the amount of money that we, we received, a conditional allotment for $793,000. Conditional upon a business plan that is going to be approved by the province. It is due tomorrow, so it will be submitted after our, our meeting today. And it is to look at what are some of those challenges within your local community? Some of the challenges we're seeing in Gray County is again securing long-term housing after emergency housing. We're seeing because there's that lack of traditional or supportive housing, we're seeing a lot of people that are congregating and living with multiple people into, in units, or they're just not being successful at maintaining their housing. We're seeing a demand in community services, so obviously a need for staffing. And we have been able to provide the Y housing and also CMHA with extra staffing for, through our, our first set of funds. So what we're, what we're proposing for the second set is looking at providing some of that transitional housing. We have three housing proponents that we've been working with in the past, just so that if there were a possibility of funds coming available for transitional housing, that we would be shovel-ready or renovation-ready, I guess, in this case. And we do have three. We have Mam Wimwin, which is one of our nonprofits. They partnered with Moikodon Native Cultural Center and CMHA to provide three units of transitional housing. They currently have a house that will be transformed into three individual units. Each person would have their own bedroom, but they would be sharing some of the amenities such as kitchen and their kitchen and common areas. We also have the Women's Center, Gray Bruce. They are looking at, currently they have second stage housing in which the county funds, and they have 10 family RGI units. We're looking at transforming one of the town homes into two separate self-contained units for single women that are experiencing domestic violence. Unfortunately, the family units in the last few years are not always full. There are a couple of vacancies each month. So, and yet there's been a huge increase in the number of single women that are needing the support of housing. So this would make total sense moving forward even out of COVID for the area. And the last one is Lutheran Social Services. They currently are a nonprofit and have 78 apartment unit apartment building. And they also have a number of other buildings. And they're wishing to convert one of their buildings into four self-contained apartments for transitional housing. And they would be working with ourselves and with CMHA for supports. And we are also allotting some funds, 175,000 approximately, to the rental arrears program, which would hopefully help about 50 households that would have rental arrears up to $3,500 a month. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, that's a great report, Anne Marie, and a lot of great stuff in there. So any questions from county councilors?
Councillor Millen and councillor Mackey.
Okay, so go ahead councillor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and indeed Anne Marie, that's a really good report. Just demonstrates all the good program, or a lot of the good programs that are in place to, to help folks that are struggling with the pandemic and, and other issues in day-to-day life. My question is, the, I see we just, we expensed some money to the Southwest Ontario Aboriginal Health Access Center. Where is that?
That is in Owen Sound.
Oh, it is in Owen Sound, okay. I wasn't aware of that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. And councillor Mackey, I think you had a question next?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Warden, and thanks very much, Anne Marie. It's really nice to see the, the amount of support that's being given to the people that you are in dire need right now. Just looking at the list of food banks and outreach programs that have received money. Did we reach out to all of those programs across Gray County? And if we haven't, is there a way for ones that are missing from that list? Who should they contact to try and access some of the money that's still remaining? Thank you.
Certainly, so food banks themselves were provided funds from a different ministry. So there were some funds, but some of the programs that provide meals are not necessarily listed as a food bank. So we have been providing funding, so for instance, Food Share or Oshare is not a food bank. Some of the Salvation Armies and other areas that are a food bank received funds from a different pot from the province. But if anybody, any social agency out there that's dealing with vulnerable populations does require they can reach out to the county and we can certainly work with them. And we did put out a call, and we certainly put out a call to all of our partners that we're aware of, that work in Gray County, that work with, work with vulnerable populations and will continue to do that. There are some funds still coming for September, so if there is need out there, we do have some funding remaining.
Okay, great for that question. Councillor Robinson, I think you're next.
Mr. Warden?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So Anne Marie, thank you. And you mentioned contact the county, who would the contact person be?
You could contact Josh Gibson.
Thank you.
Thanks for that information, that's great to have that passed on. Okay, councillor Robinson, you're next.
Well, thank you, and, and through you, Mr. Warden. Certainly, we're appreciative of the social services relief funds and everything that Anne Marie and your staff are doing for our community. One of the highlights of your very comprehensive report was the 75% increase to the, to the waitlist for affordable housing. I believe, I wonder if you could just clarify and make sure I wrote, wrote that down properly? And also in terms of being able to drill down a little more on that, is there, what more can we do to address this increase in the waitlist? And, and is there other programs that we should be looking at? Thank you, Anne Marie and Warden.
Thank you for that question, Anne Marie.
Thank you. So the 75% increase was actually to Canadian Mental Health Association waitlist, and that is for supportive housing. So that would be working in one of, living and working with one of their programs. So they have housing in which a person can receive daily supports, weekly supports, whatever might be required in order to enable them to maintain their housing. So that was the 75% increase. Surprisingly, our housing has maintained, has stayed fluid. We haven't had a huge jump in affordable housing. That could be because of the SERB right now that is available. So we'll see what happens when that's no longer around.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, those good questions. Are there any, any further questions to Anne Marie's report?
Yes, councillor Potter.
Okay, councillor Potter.
Thank you, thank you, Morden. Anne Marie, thank you for this report, it fills in a lot of blanks for me. I have had a lot of questions from ratepayers about this very subject in recent weeks. Everybody seems to know somebody who needs assistance in some way or another. So I just wonder, I know we try to communicate what services are available. And are there any, is there anywhere I can direct people? I know I can direct them to the website, but I just wonder if there are any materials available that people can get their hands on that explain how the services work, who they should get in touch with, how the provision of services is divided up in terms of the county and local municipalities and the province and so on?
Certainly, so if they're looking for local services in Town of Blue Mountains, Beaver Valley Outreach would probably be somewhere you could direct them. They have a number of local services and we do provide funding and assistance with them. And Beaver Valley Outreach could also then provide information on our services and get in touch with us or help the individual apply for some of our services too. So they would be an excellent resource for your area.
Okay, that was my guess, and so that's where I will direct, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other further questions from county council? Okay, this was moved by councillor Hutchinson, second by councillor Woodbury, as I mentioned before. Is there anybody opposed to this report? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay, thank you for that, we'll continue on with one more again. And so the next one we have is TRCW0920, and this is with regards to County Road 19 and 21. And it was moved by councillor Mackey and second by councillor Keebeny. And Matt, I think you're going to take this report forward.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Mr. Warden and councilors. I'm presenting this report on behalf of the director, who is remote at the moment. But he's possibly listening in if he has cell reception, so he may be able to jump in if something comes up that needs to be specifically answered that I can't, can't handle. But we should be able to make it. Anyways, this report makes a recommendation that committee and council contract staff to negotiate a cost-sharing agreement with the Town of Blue Mountains regarding a water pumping station that's in conflict with some intersection improvements that we're proposing or have proposed for quite a few years, actually, which this report will kind of get into, at Gray Roads 19 and 21. And we're also going to give an update on the project status. So to that end, brief chronological outline of the chain of events to present day. Gray County, along with Simcoe County, Town of Blue Mountains. They started preliminary planning for an intersection improvement at the junction of 19 and 21, which is also Simcoe Road 34, with Collingwood on the east side of that road. The project's fairly complex, it involves some property acquisition, there's developments taking place in the area. There's significant utility relocations, including the pumping station. And there's multiple stakeholders, kind of as I noted. At that time in 2011, basically a roundabout project was placed on multi-year capital construction plan, and that was what we were going to move forward with. Matt, again, was in 2011. The following year, in 2012, the project had been reduced in budget on the capital plan and was slated to be a signalized intersection at that time with auxiliary lanes. That was doing a large part to budgeting constraints. And at that time, there was a lot of focus on paving surface treated roads within the county to bring them up to a county standard. So that dug into things. 2014 class environmental assessment reinforced the decision to signalize the intersection. And a recommendation to do that was contained in that report. And in 2015, the intersection was scheduled to be signalized as, you know, it was outlined to be in the environmental report and the original, original recommendation. And it was on the 2017 multi-year capital plan. Things changed again in 2018, when Gray County, Simcoe County's met to discuss addressing a significant growth in the Collingwood and Town of Blue Mountains area. And the successful completion operation of roundabouts in Simcoe County and other jurisdictions triggered the reopening in the environmental assessment at that time. And once again, looked at the feasibility of a roundabout at that location. To bring us to today, the proposed roundabout is being planned, it's a 90% completion in design. And it's proposed to go to tender and construction in 2022. The project's dependent upon significant utility relocations taking place in 2021, which includes hydro gas and the water pumping station, which is, it's an asset of theirs. It's estimated that the pumping station, the relocation will be in the million-dollar-plus range. So it's a significant investment to have that moved to accommodate the roundabout. Additionally, with, with all that going on, there's additional system expansion and upgrades planned for the Gray County Road 19 corridor through the area, as noted in the report. The attached figure that we have in the report kind of lays that out very clearly, I think. And I have to thank Trevor Arden, who was on our staff, bringing that together, because I think it's a great illustration of what's happening. The financial plan to accomplish expansion and upgrades is also noted in the report. So I want to thank you for your consideration and open it up to any questions or comments.
Thanks, Matt, and it's interesting how things keep changing through time. Okay, questions from county councilors? Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, was there anybody indicated?
Nothing that I can see, Mr. Warden.
Okay, well, it's just, it was a pretty good, yes?
No, if I might.
Oh, councillor Alaric, go ahead.
Yes, my hand option was a little not working. So, yeah, I'd like to thank staff for this excellent report. And certainly, this is a very important project for the Town of Blue Mountains. There, they, obviously, there's a big need there. During peak times, traffic is backed up well into Collingwood. And it's a prime example of where we need our integrated regional transportation study. Because Collingwood is moving forward in their transportation plan with four-laning mountain road, which, you know, obviously has an impact on what we're doing. And, you know, they're going to bring all the traffic to the circle. And then, you know, obviously, we need a traffic circle to accommodate it and then the downstream roads. But there was very little consultation on that with us. So I'm happy to see this thing proceeding with the cooperation of both counties. I just have one question. The way the schedule is worked out, we're going to do the, the main roundabout first. And obviously, there's the complication of having to move the pumping station. But might it not be wiser to do the downstream roads first? Like continuing from the west to the east? So that, because once we put the roundabout in and Collingwood has the four-lane, we'll then be constructing the downstream roads once that major artery is available. Whereas if we started at the west end with the project and worked our way back to the east, we would already have the four-lane section of 19 to 119 in place when we get the roundabout, which will enable the traffic to get there. So what I'm worried about is looking at how this is scheduled. We're going to be stuck with a very narrow road under construction once the roundabout is done. So that's going to, yes, prolong the traffic problem. Whereas if we could start at the west end and work our way back east, we would have, you know, the roads to take the capacity of the roundabout immediately when it's completed.
Okay, Matt, that's, that's a long question there, but.
I, I can speak to the fact that I'm not aware of exactly what the timing is for Collingwood's four-laning of mountain road. We are planning on having 19 between 119 and 1921 intersection, four lanes in 2023. But the rationale right now behind not going from west to east is that we have all the components in place at the 1921 intersection with environmental assessments, which take, as I think you're all aware, a significant amount of time. There's just an amount of consultation with the public and agencies and whatnot. And that consultation or that process has just started from the west on that section of 19. So we're kind of, the order it's going right now is dependent on the way that things have fallen into place. So that is taking place now, but it'll be at least one year off before we get the environmental assessment in place to do that four-laning. So that's the reason for that. And ideally, the mountain road four-laning, if it takes place next year, you know, there's going to be a lot of conflicts and interactions going on there. But if it's two years away, we should be right in the window. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, everything else, okay there, councillor Swover?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think, I know my question to you, Matt, when we talked about this other day, is you're going to try to do as much as in the shoulder seasons as possible to try to keep away as best you can, right?
Yeah, as far as staging goes, we will definitely try to avoid the high-peak volume times in the summer and in the winter. Obviously, the winter, there will be, there will be work probably taking place in the winter, it'll be utility relocations and whatnot initially leading up to it. But that would be our, our goal. Obviously, there is going to be conflicts with traffic and with residents. And it's, it's the nature of construction, as we all know. But definitely, we, it is forefront in our minds that we will try to make it as easy on everybody as possible.
Thanks, Matt, for following up with that. Other questions in from county councilors? Anything, madam clerk? No, okay. So again, that was moved in second, is there anybody opposed to that report? Hearing none, that is carried. I'm going to suggest, suggest we do, you want to do one more report, or you want to take a break? What's the wish of everyone? Carry on? Okay, let's, let's do one more report, and then we'll take a, we'll take a break then. Okay, so moving on then to the next report, this is from, from Heather, and this is with regards to the procedural bylaw changes. And this is moved by councillor Patterson and second by councillor Woodbury. And I'm going to pass this over to our clerk, madam clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report topic with, I think, will be familiar to many council members, because I suspect a lot of your clerks have, have or are bringing a very similar report to your councils for consideration. With Bill 197, it amended several acts, including the municipal act to allow for electronic participation for members of councils and local boards outside of a declared emergency, should municipal councils wish to, and it is optional. Currently, Gray County's procedural bylaw does not permit electronic participation outside of an emergency, except for subcommittees, for subcommittees where the majority of members are public members, such as the Accessibility Advisory Committee. While there's been a few technical hiccups, overall, electronic meeting participation has gone relatively smoothly and allowed the work of Gray County to continue during the pandemic. There are some considerations that council will need to think about related to permitting electronic participation for all of council, committee of the whole, and all of our subcommittees and task force meetings. Those include the frequency, so how many times a member can participate electronically during normal circumstances and extenuating circumstances, such as a pandemic or weather-related issues? Would it be one meeting day counted or on a per-meeting basis? And would allow it to be given for a member to participate electronically for a longer period of time? So a one-off meeting versus two or three months where they're allowed to participate electronically? Perhaps for illness, perhaps for other reasons? Quorum, is it necessary to have quorum in person in the council chambers? Or is it acceptable to have quorum as, as members of council participate both in person and electronically? Right now, outside of a declared emergency, members participating electronically are not counted in quorum. These changes will permit members to be counted in quorum. Notification, it would be staff's recommendation that anyone wishing to participate electronically notify the clerk as soon as possible in advance of the meeting, so that we can ensure technology and invitations are sent out promptly. And we're recommending that staff, or that this apply to across council, committee of the whole, all of our subcommittees and task forces. So at the end, I'm looking for some feedback from council on some of those items, so that we can include those in the procedural bylaw amendment that we'll bring forward to the next meeting. The other thing included in Bill 197 was proxy voting. And this would allow a member to give a proxy for voting to another member in their absence. It's my understanding that this was more implemented for the local municipalities, who are unable to appoint alternate members to their councils. As council is well aware, every municipal. As council is well aware, every municipality in Gray County has appointed an alternate. So we do have nine alternate members that can attend county council. Should a mayor or deputy mayor be unable to attend? And when they attend, they have all the rights of a regular member, including open and closed sessions, weighted voting, et cetera. An alternate member is unable to, if they're unable to attend, they are not able to appoint a proxy. If they are appointed, it's my understanding, and I'm actually waiting for confirmation from Ministry of Municipal Affairs. If they're appointed under section two sixty-seven as a long-term replacement for illness, et cetera, then they are able to appoint a proxy. And again, I'm just waiting for confirmation on that. Proxies are not counted in quorum. So if you're providing a proxy to another member, as much as they have your vote, your attendance is not counted in quorum. So right now, it's staff's recommendation that proxies not be implemented at Gray County Council, but that's certainly up for council's consideration. So just looking for some input from council on items to be considered within the procedural bylaw amendments related to frequency. If you, if that's something that you want to put a limit on. And quorum, if you're, if you're wanting to have in-person quorum, or if it, if it does, if it matters to council whether we have ten people in council chambers or whether we participate electronically as we do now. So I'm open for those questions.
So just for a couple of clarity points before I go to questions from, from the councilors. So in the sense of quorum, currently, right now, we're all working remotely. And it's brought together through a Zoom format that puts everybody on the screen. And as myself is the warden, I can see everybody and that type of thing. If we move into the new hybrid where we are back in county council, but some are able to work remotely, how does that, do they, do we have to change our, our video process that's watching everybody? Or do we still do the Zoom in council chambers? I know, like you're talking about the next report coming forward. How do we, how does the viewing public and how do the, the chairperson and others, how does that break out? Where before, when we were in council chambers, the camera would sort of zoom to whoever as they were speaking and it sort of had a bigger picture. But if somebody is working remotely, would it be just another square on the bottom that would show them? I guess that's the first question for clarity.
So through you, Mr. Warden, actually, Rob and I are going to be meeting with our audio/video provider tomorrow, C T R E, to go over those, to make sure that our systems interconnect properly and that we can see people participating electronically. The public can see those through our live stream, but also those participating in person in council chambers. So we will be working through all of those technical issues with C T R E.
So just to finish, I think that's the very most important part of somebody is working remotely, that people can still see that they are present. And that maybe rolls into that part about the quorum part that shows that. And the other part, you were trying to get some feedback on the number of times people could use that remotely. So I'm going to go to questions, I think, Council Millen. I think you maybe showed first indication you wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, my, my own personal opinion is that it shouldn't matter how many times you want to participate. If, if, for instance, remotely participating council is being included in quorum, then it shouldn't matter whether you're remotely or how many times you are remotely or in person, at least in my opinion, because your, your vote counts the same regardless of where you're situated. I, I certainly agree with, with not supporting the proxy. I, I just foresee a real mess with proxies. That wasn't the first word that came to my mind, but a mess would, would catch that. The other question I had was to the clerk was start time of meetings. Is that in the procedural bylaw or is that something outside the procedural bylaw?
I'm clerk.
I think it's in our procedural bylaw. I will just double-check with that. And keep going to questions if you would like, Mr. Warden.
So I guess the reason I ask that question is, and I recall, you know, maybe, I don't know when that changed. It used to be ten o'clock start. I'm just wondering what the rationale for that change was. And I'm wondering if we could go back to the ten o'clock start. Certainly, certainly, some councilors at the southern end of the county would, at least myself, certainly appreciate the extra thirty minutes to get to on sound. I know not everybody feeds cattle or have chores, but particularly in the wintertime, it's, those thirty minutes could be well appreciated. Thank you.
So I hear, I hear what you're saying, Council Millen. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Just in response to the procedural bylaw time, three point two of the procedural bylaw says council will meet on the established dates and times. So it doesn't have a specific time in there. And that would be determined by council in coordination with the clerk, C A O, and the warden.
Thank you.
So just for, for further part of that, Madam Clerk, if Council Millen was wishing to change, how would his process be on changing that? Would that be a notice of motion or would that be something through this discussion?
It would be a discussion. It came about when we went to committee of the whole because the meetings were going to be longer. They were all-day meetings and starting just that half an hour earlier. And this was after a survey put out to members of council at that time on starting at nine, starting at nine thirty or starting at ten. And nine thirty seemed to be the middle ground and, and most supported by council at that time. And should council wish to amend that time, then a notice of motion would be more, more than appropriate.
Thanks for that clarity. And anything else, Council Millen?
I just, just to follow up on that real quick was I, I dare say the meetings for this term particularly have been somewhat more efficient in their time than perhaps the last term. So if that is the procedure needed, then I would, I would look into that myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that and thanks for those comments. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, Counselor Desai and Counselor Swover.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Well, Councilor Millen stole most of my thunder. I agree with the points he's made, and those were the points I was going to make. Further, sort of trying to build upon the discussion we're having around the start time, I guess my question would be through you to the clerk as to why we cannot make that motion today. We are already discussing the procedural bylaw. So I, would it not be? My opinion is that it wouldn't be inappropriate for us to discuss other amendments to the procedural bylaw. The reason I say that is that if a notice of motion is brought forward today, it won't be discussed until next meeting and it won't be ratified until the meeting after. As opposed to if the amendment is directed, if staff has given direction to make that amendment today, it can be part of the bylaw that comes to the next council meeting in two weeks. And then the first council meeting in October, when we're all expecting to be in council chambers, we can actually be starting at ten instead of nine thirty. So I guess that, that becomes my question is, why can we not give direction to, to make that amendment today? Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
So we are making amendments to the procedural bylaw today based on Bill one ninety-seven. So that is electronic meetings and proxy voting. The procedural bylaw actually doesn't specify a time that we begin our meetings. It just is established meeting dates and times.
Put yourself on the spot here.
It's okay. It's all right. Because we're strictly speaking to changes to Bill one ninety-seven and electronic meetings and proxies, and the time is not specified in the procedural bylaw, it really wouldn't be an amendment to the procedural bylaw, per se. It's just a change in, in practice.
So still, the process would be a notice of motion to.
That would be my recommendation.
And I guess in a little bit of fairness, I know maybe, maybe this term of council wasn't pulled like the last term of council. But I think the explanation was said that because of the new format, that was sort of how it was set and that sort of thing. Just one other comment with regards to the time. I guess if, if we make changes, it's being suggested here in the procedural bylaw, if there is one of those aha moments where timing is an issue and you can't, you don't have the time to drive here, you could always do that remotely from home as well. So you, you can save that time, which gives that extra flexibility if there is that ha-ha moment first thing in the morning of however that is. But that's just for some, some information. Okay, Councilor Swover?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, people being able to attend remotely, but there should be some guidance on that. I'd hate to think that a person could go away for the entire winter and, and attend from Florida every, every, every meeting for the, the entire winter. So there should be some guidance on, you know, the number of meetings. Certainly, COVID is going to be around for a while. And anybody that is health compromised should be allowed to attend remotely. And I think there would, it would be good to have some guidance on that, however, and not. I mean, I'd hate to get to a point where, you know, half a council is attending from Florida. So, you know, this is a responsibility we all take on when we become mayors and deputy mayors and people expect us to be there. And although this has been working quite well, the virtual meetings, you know, it is always good to have that personal connection as well with, with having the meetings in person. The other thing, we are looking at the same thing at the town of Blue Mountains. And the, it seems that there may be, well, we have to solve the technical issues with doing hybrid meetings because when you're in the council chamber, the potential for feedback and time delays and things is, you know, that's something that our staff is working through with our I D, I T department. So, you know, if we decide to go that way with hybrids, then we'd certainly appreciate anything the, the county learns. And we'll, we'll tell you what we learn as well. Because that seems to be the main, main stumbling block. You know, one of the solutions could be that everybody wears a hat set at the in-person meeting, but that doesn't seem to be very popular either. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilor Swover. And I guess to you, Madam Clerk, obviously, other, maybe the four hundred and forty-three other municipalities are dealing with this as well. And through your Clerks Association and, and are you getting any feedback from what, I guess it's early days of what other municipalities are doing? Or some of those addressing some of the questions that has been raised this morning?
So I have surveyed our Gray County clerks, and I've heard also from some of the county clerks around the province. A lot of them are moving to electronic participation and really sorting out this very similar questions to the discussions we're having today about how many quorum achieved in person or just through a combination of virtual and in-person. So some of those questions, it is really early days because this just came out when the, the province ended their emergency declaration and made amendments to the municipal act. So it really, they really are discussions that are happening now. As far as the proxy voting, I haven't, and none of the counties that I've spoken with have supported that at this point in time.
I think you make a good example of the alternative county councillor sort of, sort of fulfills that, that point. Why would you, and maybe it's more geared to lower tiers versus counties as well.
Yes.
Other questions?
I have C A O Wingrove, and then I also have Councilors Robinson, Mackey, and Carlton.
Okay, Madam C A O.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the comments Heather made about the need to coordinate what we're doing and the process that, and the procedures we want to put in place with respect to the idea that people might go away for the entire winter and not be able to attend county council in person. My first thought was that your local requirements would likely preclude that from being an option for you. So, and, and you are all so committed that I just, I just don't see any of you doing that. But we will work, I think, to make sure that whatever we're trying to do here at county is in good alignment with what you're doing at the local level with regard to absences or remote participation.
You're absolutely right, Madam Clerk. We, or Madam C A O, we're ultimately responsible to the voting public as well. And they watch, see as well, and they may have a dim view. If you're remotely working for six months, they may think, maybe that person's not really into their job, right? So. Okay, thank you for that, Madam C A O. Counselor Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I really appreciate this discussion. And also, I appreciate our clerk for bringing this forward. I would like to see a hybrid of some sort where we can have the physical attendance of our members of council, but also the virtual attendance and have that count towards quorum and also in voting. So I think that's something to take a look at. Also have this extended to our various committees. So long-term care, sustainability, affordable housing, just to name a few. I see the application for having remote participation of our committee members and members of council. I'm just kind of going through the list if I could, just by virtue of input. I would not want to see a limit on the number of times a member of council could participate remotely. Things come up, but as long as there's the justification for being in attendance, participating to your best ability and voting, I think that, that would be sufficient, at least from my perspective. The other comments, oh, proxies, I'm not enamored by that in, in any way. I see a lot more of a hurdle with regard to that part of participation. We already have something in place, and the clerk has spoke to that in terms of the alternate for our representation. I'm wondering, so those are my comments. I'm looking forward to amendments to the procedural bylaw. Hopefully, that supports these comments overall. But I wonder if our clerk could speak to the potential for delegations participating remotely, continued in the fashion that we're seeing. And also what this all means to public participation or, you know, citizen involvement by way of, of watching our participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson, and a couple of good points there. Madam Clerk.
Certainly, thank you. Good, very good points and good questions. So delegations have actually worked quite well virtually. And I think in the discussions with amendments to the procedural bylaw, we would have that option of either coming in person because some are certainly just more comfortable attending in person once the building is, is back open to the public. Some are more easier. It's easier for them to appear virtually because they're coming from afar distance. So I think we would leave that optional in there. Certainly, we are going to be, continue to livestream whether we are virtual or whether we are in person. We record all of our council and committee of the whole meetings, and we livestream them as well. So the public is able to see those. And again, once we, and you'll hear that in the next report from our C A O, when the building does open, we'll certainly be adhering to all of our open meeting rules and allowing public to access council meetings, both either through livestream or in person.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, I have Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks very much, Heather. It is a good discussion. I'll bite off the easy one first. My opinion on proxies, they would be very problematic, and I couldn't support proxies. As far as virtual participation, I want to get back to what is normal. And to me, normal was meeting in person. So I would certainly encourage all of my council colleagues to try and do their utmost to meet in person when that is available. I understand there may be circumstances where virtual attendance may be required, but I would hope that would be kept to a minimum. I just like seeing everybody together in one place. I think it's a better democracy for us all. And hopefully, we can get back to normal. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for that, Counselor Mackey, and Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We had a similar discussion to this at Georgia Bluffs Council last night. And one of the things that our clerk brought forward was the purpose of having a minimum number of councilors in attendance. would mean that with all our meetings being livestreamed, you weren't looking at an empty council chamber with most of council being offsite. So there's a valid reason for making it look like more people are in attendance than, but still allowing for some to be coming in remotely. I would also respond to Counselor Robinson about the public meeting. We had a public meeting last night with about 15 members of the public responding virtually and it worked extremely well. Our clerk had it well set up. It followed a sequence. He called on each person as it was their turn. They spoke and we could hear quite well. So it worked really, really well. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for that, for those points, Counselor Carlton. And I've always thought that we all should have a cardboard cutout just to put there, just in case. You see it at the basketball game. They have the cardboard cutouts and the, and the baseball. So just to have one as a counselor or I think would be just, we put that in the budget, Madam Clerk. Great. Well, I think it's a good idea. I saw one in one of the middlesex of a warden once and it was, anyway, I won't go there. Any other comments or questions with regards to the report that the clerk is moving forward? I wonder, Madam Clerk, if you do maybe a little bit of a poll, maybe you need to get some more information or do you think you've gained enough to move forward or?
I, I think I have. I appreciate everyone's comments and insight. These are your meetings, so definitely we want to make sure that, that they work for you and, and that we still follow all of our requirements under the municipal act. So I've, I've gained a lot of insight from here, from the discussion today, and I think that will help in drafting the amendments to the procedural bylaw and we'll bring that forward at the next meeting. I do see Counselor Hicks has his hand up as well.
Oh, you spurred on some more excitement here. Counselor, Counselor Hw. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No excitement here. I, I think the very good report, very good discussion. I'm with Counselor Desai on perhaps relooking the start time for our meetings. So I'll just say if he doesn't bring a notice of motion at the end of this meeting, then I will.
Okay. Thank you for, for that.
Just for clarification, it was my idea, not Counselor Desai.
No one asked for a clarification, Counselor Millen. You're supposed to be recognized by the warden.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Warden, we have Counselor Potter and I think Counselor Mackey had his hand up.
Just before I go there, I gotta tell the two individuals, both didn't get recognized by the warden. So you're both. Okay, sorry, Counselor Porter.
Potter and Mackey.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, Warden. Just my situation is that I, I do face an issue with health. Right now, pretty good. So I would be looking to attend meetings in person. And I wonder whether we've looked into the idea that perhaps someone should, I, I don't want this to, the idea of attending remotely just to become a convenience. I, I'm not sure that that's where we want to go. That it is a result of the COVID situation and it is a result of trying to protect people. So if, you know, if we look at the mandatory mask orders, they do allow exemptions and allow people for a good reason. And I wonder if we should look at it that way, which might answer Counselor Swerber's concerns that people just not use it as a way to be away somewhere. I would probably attend in person now. If however, it becomes necessary, I would like the option to attend remotely. If, if that is what's necessary to protect my health. And as far as the rest, 10 o'clock start time is great. And yeah, I'm not in favor of proxy voting either.
Hey, thank you for that, Counselor Potter. And I have Counselor Mackey, but I think Counselor Columbus has also made me wanting to speak as well. So I'll, I'll go to Counselor Mackey and I'll look forward. Okay, Counselor Mackey and then.
Thanks, Mr. Warden for recognizing me. I just wanted, Counselor Potter just really talked about what I was thinking of. I don't want this to be convenience for people. You know, the expectation should be to attend in person. And you raised a good point, Mr. Warden, about, you know, maybe a survey should go out to all members of council with specific questions from the clerk. We've certainly done that before and then we get feedback from, from everyone. Cause it is an important decision when we're talking about the procedural bylaw and moving forward. And the decision should be made based on, you know, getting back into the real world again. And, you know, if we're locked down, then we continue virtually. But, you know, getting back to the way things wear is what we should all be striving for. Thank you.
Right. And thank you for those comments. I think Counselor Columbus, I think you were indicating, and then I have Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to, to follow up with Counselor Potter's comments about personal situations. And mine is as a caregiver for the senior. And there are times when, you know, working remotely would be very, very beneficial in the sense of not being able to find care, you know, at the spur of the moment or something of that nature. So I am in favor of remote participation. I think that used judiciously, that can work both ways. Not in favor of proxy. I think that we all have a responsibility. We need to be there to, to share our vote and our, and our opinions. In terms of the 10 o'clock start, it's, I don't mind either one, although I do prefer the 9:30.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for those comments. And Counselor Robinson, I think you were wishing to speak.
Oh, certainly, Mr. Warden. And this is just a follow-up to my comment. And in terms of if council should change the procedural bylaw to allow electronic participation, the point that I was making is that it, it really would be a tool or a mechanism by which a member of council could still participate in the event that there is a need or that they're not able to physically be there, but still want to participate. And certainly Mayor Columbus provided an example of that. I'd also submit that perhaps bad weather, certainly we have bad weather that is very different in, in all of our municipalities. So that would just, this ability to participate electronically for, for reasons where we're just physically not able to get to the chamber would be most flexible. And I think it would achieve the results that we need. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other councillors wish to add some information here and?
Counselor Kivini.
Okay, Counselor Kivini, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I've really appreciated this discussion. And I am also in favor of permitting the electronic participation on the occasions when, as Christine mentioned, when, whether it's an issue or when health issues are, are a concern. What I was going to suggest, I really like the idea for committee meetings because we're all very busy people. Our schedules are full and I think having the option to participate in committee meetings in particular could be beneficial. If there are days when we are back to back or have conflicts. So, and I agree with the rest on the proxies. And certainly I'm looking forward to getting back to seeing everyone in person and certainly encourage when, when possible for all of us to be together. But certainly I'm understanding of the needs for electronic participation from time to time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Kivini. And certainly getting back is certainly going to be a, looking at the next report, but no hugs for a while. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else wishes to speak?
No, sir. If I could just provide some closing comments, I think the discussion has been excellent. And the opportunity to permit on occasion the electronic participation by members of council for the various reasons that have been stated today. You know, everybody, I think I'm getting that loud and clear, is really looking forward to coming back in person and participating in the chambers. But this gives, does give an option in the circumstances where that, that is just not perhaps practical on, on that particular day or for a particular meeting. But they could still participate. So I'll work with our county solicitor and we'll draft some language for the bylaw amendments that would support that.
Okay. Well, well, thank you for that, Madam Clerk. And I would think that if something else comes to mind from county councillors, they can shoot you off an email or.
Absolutely.
You know, so there's that. And just a couple of things that do come to mind with regards to health reasons. And, you know, we're always told if you're not feeling well, don't go to work. And certainly I would, I think would also pertain to county council. And if you, you know, don't feel up to it, but you still want to participate, at least you're not going to spread that, whatever you have or could possibly have to other county councils. I think we would all probably appreciate that, especially if we have any health confirmations or, you know, the issues that we could have. And also I would think, and thinking back to Counselor Millen, in the sense of some of us do have an hour drive. And I know sometimes the weather can, can be varied throughout the county at Gray. And certainly if there's a, the ability to work from home versus risking your possibly life to get to a county council meeting, then there's that option as well. And I think the viewing public would appreciate that as well in the sense of safety and, and those type of things. And we know how the weather can change really quickly as well. And so that's, you know, I think, I think the viewing public would, would, would certainly be, would appreciate those parts of, of the flexibility there. So, okay, so this has been moved by Counselor Patterson and it's been a while now we've been on this discussion, but it's been a good discussion. And Counselor Patterson and Counselor Woodbury. And is there any further comment, comments or questions? As you can, you can send questions to, to the clerk. Is there anybody opposed to this? Hearing none, that is carried. So there you go, Madam Clerk, you got your marching orders.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yes. At this time, it's 11:22. Let's take a break. And do we want to come back at 11:35? Is that, that's almost 15 minutes or 13 minutes. Is that okay? 11:35? Okay, we'll take a break and we'll come back at that time. This meeting back to order and our next report is with regards to return in person. Return to in-person meetings. And that's moved by Counselor Burley and second by Counselor Columbus. And I think it's this tag team between Kim and Heather. So I guess who's going to go first? Madam CEO, maybe first?
Yes, Kim, you're on mute there.
Welcome.
That doesn't work. Sorry about that. So following closely on the discussion that we just had about amendments to the procedural bylaw, this report gets into some of the more specific requirements for returning to in-person meetings. We're asking that council consider returning to an in-person council arrangement beginning on October the 8th of this year with appropriate protocols in place. And that as we just discussed, the option for some councillors and staff to continue to attend virtually remain in place in accordance with the updated procedural bylaw. So starting next Monday, September 14th is when we're going to open up the county administration building and some of our satellite offices to the public on a by appointment basis. A lot of work's gone into safety protocols to make sure that, that we can do this safely, both to protect our staff and also to the members of the public. To that end, you'll see in the report, there's a diagram that shows how the council chambers could be set up to facilitate the appropriate physical distancing, but still allow everybody to be in the room if everybody was actually attending in person that day. So you see how the councillors are spaced out around the horseshoe and then other councillors are sitting in the row behind in the place where the senior management team at the desk the senior management team normally occupies. Then there's some place in the gallery area for the senior management team. They can be in the room. They can also be watching the live stream from their desks. In the future, when we go to completely opening up the building again and, and having the public in attendance in council chambers, should they so choose, we'll have to look further at, at how to arrange that so we can have an appropriate public gallery as well as SMT, as well as council. So this is really very much a, a work in progress. Heather mentioned that we will work with, with Communications Manager Rob Hatton and CTRE to ensure that the council chambers and the online Zoom can work well together so that people can see who's where. This will be some sort of a split screen arrangement as, as much as I know right now. So, but people need to see who's where and be able to call for questions and respond appropriately. We will continue to monitor the situation, working closely as we have with the medical officer of health to ensure that, that it's, it's safe for people to be in the, in the space physically present. And if we need to make changes, well, we'll communicate our concerns and considerations to all of you and act accordingly. I'm happy to take any questions. I feel like we had a good discussion on the last, with the last report. So is there anything else I can, I can help with, with this particular report?
Thank you, Madam CEO. And is there any questions to with regards to what's been reported so far?
You see Counselor Potter.
Okay, Counselor Potter, go ahead.
Thank you. Just even maybe a suggestion. I wonder if it's actually more interesting for someone to look at the images that we're seeing now rather than a, a wide shot of a whole room where they really, it's hard to tell who's actually speaking. I, I almost would think that this, even if we're all sitting in, in the same room and I realize we'd have to have headsets to make sure we don't get the echoes. But even if we're all sitting in, in the same room, maybe seeing us in, in this sort of image would be more interesting for someone watching and they would be able to understand us a little better. So I just wondered if we could look at that as an option.
Yeah. So having thumbnails rather than that, than the wide shot of the room. It's an interesting idea, not one I'd thought of, and we'll, we'll bring that forward to other discussions with CTRE.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was a question I was having, whether the camera could zoom in on the new placement of other. Probably, probably it could, Madam CEO, other than with the exception maybe with regards to where you're placing Counselor Body and Counselor Columbus. I don't know if the camera could, but that's something you're going to follow up.
Right.
Is, is there any other questions at this point from county councillors? Madam Clerk? All right. So is there anything else from you, Madam CEO? Are we moving to the clerk for further discussion?
I have nothing else to add. Kim has covered it quite nicely.
Okay. So basically this is moving forward. Oh, yeah. Oh, so I got a note here from Rob Hatton that he should be able, they should be able to zoom in on everybody. It's, I just got a note there on that. So that's good to know. So I guess, Madam CEO, this is, if this gets supported, this is sort of the plan, subject to, I guess, if there was something that changed, then I guess that would be, that would take precedence. And I guess it all depends in, in where we move forward with our declaration and, and a number of points that, I mean, moving forward with this still allows us to keep our declaration in place if we feel that's, you know, after 17th and stuff like that.
That's correct. So at the next meeting, if we pass the changes to the procedural bylaw, then that facilitates us being able to move forward with this, this hybrid model, if I can call it that. And unless something changes, we'll simply plan to begin to meet again in person on October the 8th. And I think when next we meet, we'll have a discussion about at what time.
Maybe. All right. And, and I think just in general, I will say from, maybe from the warden's position in the sense of, I think from, from the general public seeing us coming back, and I, I've caught that from others around the table that it's probably, you know, a bit of that, maybe that new normal. But people are maybe sensing that, you know, they like to hear. And I think that's probably a positive thing for the public in the sense that they see that we're, we're doing the social distancing and all the provisions in place. It leads as a good example of, of how we can do it safely and still move forward with our general business of life. And, and I think that's a good reflection of how, how best we can do it. Okay. So that was, that was put on the floor, the motion, seeing there's no other discussion on the motion. Anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, hearing none, that's carried. All right. So then moving on to item E, and this is with regards to delegation of duties update. And this was moved by Counselor Gamb. And this was moved by Counselor Gamble and Counselor Hicks. And Tara, you're going to, uh, take this report. Madam Deputy Clerk? Madam Clerk, are we, uh, missing Tara there?
You're not coming. She's, I can, I can hear her because she's three meters away from me, but. I can't hear you still.
I can see ya. So I guess, Madam CEO, this is an example of a, we're needing set of pairs, headsets.
That's correct.
Take your time, Tara, we'll wait. Something happened there.
Okay, how's this?
Yeah, do you want to do a test, one, two, three?
Test one, two, three. Get our computers on mute in here. Sorry about that, everybody.
The floor is yours.
Okay, so the delegation of duties policy was last updated in twenty eighteen. The endorsement of the purchasing policy on January ninth necessitated an update to the schedule of the delegation of duties bylaw. While staff were undertaking this update, we included further amendments for consideration as well. Updates being considered today include updates to the new authority to award limits contained within the purchasing policy, administrative updates such as typo corrections, changes to staff titles, updates to links, changes in signatories, updates to bylaw numbers, et cetera. Um, inclusion of previously delegated items related to the signing of D C bylaw agreements. That was the recent report from Kevin and Randy brought forward a meeting or two ago. Leases for the Sidneyham campus and the appointment of prosecutors and bylaw enforcement officers, and as well incorporating delegations related to legal services, which we're not previously in there. The proposed changes are noted in further detail in the attachment to this report. And if there are any questions, myself or the relevant staff are happy to take those.
Well, thanks, Tara, for, for that. And that's pretty straightforward in your report there. Questions from county counselors? Anything, Madam Clerk? No?
No, nothing, Mr. Warden.
Okay, then again, that was, uh, moved by Counselor Gamble and second by Counselor Hicks. Is there anybody opposed to that motion? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay. So moving on then to item F, uh, community transportation update. And this was moved by Counselor Hutchison and Counselor Millen. And Stephanie Stewart is going to take this report. So, good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, Warden McQueen. Uh, thank you for having me here today. It's a very exciting day. We are getting very, very close to the project launching. So we're just working away here, trying to get all of the final details, uh, done. Uh, some of you may notice, if you're along the Highway ten route, the signs have gone up for the bus stop locations, so those are up, uh, which is really exciting. It's becoming very real. Um, and we're getting lots of phone calls about the service and the schedules. And everybody is very excited and lots of positive feedback, so it's been wonderful. Um, you'll see today in the report I have for you, it's a general overview of some of the things that council has asked me to look into. So one of them being the cost to increase our vehicle size, uh, to allow for additional capacity and additional riders. And I also included the additional cost to, uh, expand our vehicles to include, um, both ambulatory and wheelchair accessible seating. So the price points are there. Uh, it is our recommendation to wait a little bit to see how the service goes and what the uptake is from our residents and our riders to learn, uh, what the patterns are before we dish, uh, invest any additional funds. But so far, so good. We're, we're going ahead the way as planned. And there are some options to improve our service over time, which I have in the report for you as well. Additionally, I met with, um, Duffin County staff, uh, Town of Orangeville staff and Bruce County staff to go over the, um, implementation of a vehicle for hire by law. So the Town of Orangeville has done a lot of work on that already, uh, and they do have some Uber, drivers in Orangeville already. So we were working with them because there's no sense in duplicating things that have already been done well. Uh, so between the three counties and the Town of Orangeville, we're looking at a way to seamlessly implement a bylaw. So that way, um, individuals, it's not just going to be for Uber, it'll be for all vehicle for hire. So it could be Lyft, it could be any other things that come up in the future, to allow those kinds of businesses and those drivers to travel seamlessly through all three counties, which ultimately aligns with the bus system that we're putting in place. So that, the goal is it provides people with alternative forms of transit. So if you're able to take the bus down one way, um, but just based on scheduling and what you wanted to do with your life, um, you're not able to take the bus back. We're trying to make sure that people have options so that they're not stranded, um, and there's alternative ways for people to get home. So that's the report I have here for you today. Does anyone have any questions about, um, the increases in service or the future of our vehicle for hire by law?
Thanks, Stephanie, for that report. Uh, County Counselor, any questions?
I have Counselor Potter and Mackey.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Potter first, and then Counselor Mackey. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you, Warden, and, and thank you, Stephanie, for your report. Uh, I just wondered, I, I wasn't totally clear, and maybe, maybe the January twenty twenty-one date is the one I'm looking for. But, but just how quickly will we analyze the ridership and try to make a decision? Because we're a little concerned, I think, that, that, uh, people may get frustrated if, if there's more demand than we can meet early on, and we may lose them. Well, that could skew our, our numbers. So how quickly can we respond to that? And, and maybe your, the, the paragraph on your planning for future system needs answers the question. I just want to be sure I'm getting the right answer there.
Stephanie?
Yes, through you, Warden McQueen. So that's a great question, and, and I think this is something that we will be doing constantly. So we'll be receiving K P I data from, uh, driver seat on a regular basis, which will give me a good understanding of, um, what's happening in our current ridership. We're also putting in the ability for someone to say, like, was it full? Did you want a book? So that people can indicate that there is more interest, um, and that more people do want a book, but that it was full. So we're trying to mitigate all of those problems and try and collect that data. So that way, if it is becoming an issue, then we'll know very quickly, um, how to adjust for it. But one thing that we do need to consider is the lead time to purchase larger vehicles and to get larger vehicles in place. So that will take some time. What I could offer in place, um, would be an alternative. So perhaps we could offer two of the same vehicles running down the road, which would increase capacity to twenty seats instead of ten, instead of ten. So there are solutions that we have. There are alternatives that we can put in place because Driver Seat does have additional vehicles in their fleet, so we can, uh, access those vehicles if need be. Um, we do have a great relationship with Driver Seat, and we are aware, and they are aware, sorry, of your concerns. They have watched council presentations, and they, they are aware, um, and we are working very closely, and we'll keep a close eye on it. I will come back to council before January. Uh, January would be the latest you'll hear from me. Uh, I will commit to coming back as soon as I can with some concrete data.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any, any follow-up there, Counselor Potter?
No, that's got it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Mackey, and then Counselor Robinson I have on my list here. Go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden McQueen, and thanks, Stephanie. Uh, look forward to seeing what the, uh, the ridership numbers are gonna be. Can you just, uh, just a question, uh, a follow-up around, uh, the specialized transit? Uh, you know, currently, it's very fragmented through to both Gray and Bruce Council, or Gray and Bruce Counties. And there are a number of lower-tier municipalities that are, are anxious to see a, uh, Gray Bruce specialized transit system. So just wanting to, to know what sort of discussions are taking place so that we could have, uh, you know, equitable, uh, ridership for, uh, people with, uh, mobility issues. You know, currently, uh, a van may be leaving, uh, you know, Southgate, traveling tone and sound. They travel right through Gray Highlands, but are not able to pick anyone up in Gray Highland. And that's just an example. So I'm certainly not promoting one, uh, transit, a specialized system over another. But I think it is disjointed right now, and there is, uh, an opportunity, you know, when we're looking at transportation to, uh, develop, uh, a Gray Bruce specialized transit system. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey.
Mr. Ward, I can respond to this. The, uh, the specialized transit services, um, that I believe Counselor Mackey is looking for, similar to what Smart or H C S S provides, are services that pick people up at their home and that provide some assistance to folks as well, to, to get them boarded onto the vehicle, et cetera. Which is quite different than the, the task that Stephanie has before her, where, you know, people need to be at a scheduled stop. I think part of what we're trying to understand in these initial months of this program is, um, where that demand line is and where there's a difference. Are we see, are we going to see, um, folks coming to our bus stops that are in need of additional assistance or, uh, different seating arrangement than is provided for in these buses? The good thing is that people are, um, calling ahead to, to book their seat and so that we prevent anyone from, from hopefully being disappointed in all of this. But going forward, as far as, uh, an accessible transit, transportation system, that actually, um, would augment or, or work in alignment with H C S S and Smart, those are different, a different project. And I think, um, we need to look at structuring that as a, as a separate thing, um, going forward. If we really want to kind of roll up our sleeves and get into it, my recommendation would be that we have a, take a bit of time and see where this project is going to take us and, um, how the public is going to respond to this service. Uh, and then we can look at how we could efficiently, um, build on what we're doing here to, uh, extend the service out to others.
Thank you for that, Madam CEO. Counselor Mackey, did you have a follow-up on that?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Thanks for those, uh, comments, Kim. Uh, I do think it's time to roll up our sleeves. You know, specialized transit is required through Gray and Bruce County. And, uh, you know, I'd like to see everyone have equal, uh, access to it, uh, which currently doesn't exist. Well, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, next I have Counselor Robinson, and I'm not sure if I have anybody else on the, uh, list. But go ahead, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, and through you, great report as usual, Stephanie. Thank you for your comments, and also Madam C A O for your additional comments. So what would be the typical approach for our new Gray County commuters to utilize our bus service? Should they call ahead? Are they okay being at the bus stop? I wonder if you could just speak about our, our different routes and also including the Highway four corridor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, Stephanie.
Through you, Warden McQueen. So we are asking all riders to book in advance. Due to contact tracing, if needed, we are asking that everybody books their seat in advance. This is to, as Kim had just said, to avoid disappointment. This ensures that you have a seat on the bus. We know that every, you know, this, now that we know that the bus is full, this will help us also understand if we need to be tossing another vehicle in there because the demand is rising or falling. So it will give us a really good, um, understanding by asking people to book in advance. As a result of that, um, which it's not a typical way to ride a bus. A typical way to ride a bus is that you just stand at the stop, you get on the bus, and away you go. But in a world of COVID, uh, we've implemented this, and we think that it will be a very good safety measure. People will appreciate it. So in the future, we can look to change that, but with that is something that we have right now. So we're, we are trying our best to communicate that. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, in addition to that, we are also having a trailer vehicle there for the first, uh, week, um, and additional days if needed, um, to ensure that no one is left stranded. So that, you know, we can provide that education on the first few days to say, hey, you know, you didn't book a seat. No worries, you can get on today, away we go. But just so you know, here's how you do it. Um, so we do have two options. You can book online, or you can also call in in advance, and you can book your seat over the phone. Um, so there's two different ways to do it. Is to follow up with your second question, which was reviewing the routes. So we've actually named the routes with numbers, so it reduced the confusion. Uh, so the routes are now Route one and two, so that will be Highway ten. Uh, routes, I'm just gonna pull my sheet in front of me so I don't get this wrong. Uh, Routes three and four are Highway two, so going on sound to the Town of Blue Mountains. Uh, Route five will be on sound to Wyreton, and Route six will be, uh, Durham to Waukesha and Fleischerton, including Hanover, of course. So those will be the routes. Um, they, on Monday, September fourteenth, Highway ten starts, so Route one and two. Fares will be waived from the first day our service starts until October thirty-first. So it gives everybody a chance to try any of the routes for free for a short period of time. Um, and then we'll start implementing the fees starting November first.
Hey, thanks, Stephanie. All right. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, uh, great response. Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, by chance, would you have the phone number that you could say? Thank you.
Would you like that verbally, or would you like that, um, via email?
Oh, verbally at this meeting, if at all possible. Thank you.
Oh, sure. I can do that right now. I'm just gonna confirm it.
Maybe put it in the chat.
I can, but I believe the phone, I have the phone number here. It is two, two, six, one, zero, one, zero, zero, one.
So two, two, six, one, zero.
Two, two, six, nine, one, zero.
Nine, one, zero, yeah.
One, zero, zero, one.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Christine. All right, I think I have Counselor Millen maybe popped up.
Counselor Columbus first, and then Counselor Millen.
Okay, uh, go ahead, uh, Counselor Columbus.
Warden, um, actually, my question, uh, follows the accessibility route. And I'm just wondering, uh, while you've, and you've actually answered the question, uh, Stephanie, with your, with your great report and your, and your answer now, was how, uh, the, um, need would be assessed for, uh, from the accessibility perspective, and, and how would this then translate into, into service for? And it's not only, um, wheelchairs or, um, ambulatory, uh, specialized, uh, transit services. It's for, uh, seniors that may have difficulty, um, getting on a traditional, uh, bus route, but still needing to get to, to where they need to go. So that was my question, and, um, uh, if I could just, uh, have some more clarification on, on, uh, the accessibility, uh, perspective.
For sure.
Okay, uh, Stephanie?
Through you, Warden. So that's a great question, and we've been fielding this question from members of our public, uh, with, um, accessibility needs or just requiring a little bit of extra care. So we are able to provide individuals who are not in a, a mobility. We are able to provide rides for anyone who is able to exit their mobile, mobility device and take one or two steps into our vehicles. So if you're able to exit your device, if you use a walker or you use a wheelchair that is foldable, uh, or you have canes, we can assist. Uh, our chauffeurs will assist you to get into the vehicle. When we can store your mobility device in the vehicle. Individuals that require a lift at this time, um, to remain in their wheelchair while riding at this time are not able to because the vehicles do not accommodate a full lift. So what we're doing to mitigate that is we are asking anyone who does require an accessible ride to contact us. And we are working with our partners, um, and we're trying to do an overlay of services to understand what are the requirements. How do people qualify for the services that exist already in our community? And we're trying to educate them on what is, already exists. Because the hope is that by offering a service like ours, where we can perhaps, um, take some of the ambulatory, ambulatory passengers from our specialized transit services, and we can take some of those passengers, and perhaps we can kind of swap passengers back and forth to, um, reduce the burdens that people are facing and the barriers that people are facing to transit right now. So, uh, we know it's an issue. We are working on it, and this is just our start. Um, and we are committed to coming up with better solutions and working on it as it goes forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. All right, and, uh, next I have Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, Stephanie, um, just a question about luggage.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Stephanie, just a question about luggage. Are there going to be restrictions on weight, size, volume? You know, is, is, are the drivers going to be given discretion to say, yeah, we can take that, no, we can't, I'm gonna get out and help this person, I'm not gonna get out and help this person? Where does that line lie and whose responsibility ultimately, ultimately will it be?
Through you, Warden. So we have the, we have the language already on the website and Driver's Seat has included the same language on their website. It is the responsibility of the passenger to carry their belongings on and off the vehicle. The chauffeur will not assist, I mean, they would, may assist, but it is not the responsibility of the driver to assist anybody with their packages or their parcels. We also have that language in there as well that says that it is the responsibility of the passenger that they may or may not be able to fit everything that they have on that bus due to capacity. So there is that line, there is that disclaimer in there to say like you can show up with all of your stuff, but you may or may not be able to fit on the bus with it. So we have made that very clear, the intention, and we are expecting most people to travel with, you know, a bag or two, a backpack or a small travel bag. But if someone does require a lot of space, I would encourage them to perhaps find other forms of transportation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and just one more, if I might, Mr. Warden. Are we gonna track no-shows?
Yes and no, but it doesn't, because people are paying in advance, it would be no different than if people bought a book of tickets and then just didn't use them. So we will know that people haven't showed up, but it, it's the responsibility of the passenger to be at the stop five minutes prior to the bus arriving and to make it onto that bus themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks for those questions. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, I have Councilor Kivony.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Kivony. Thanks, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you too, Stephanie, if I may. When we had our local bus service in Meaford, one of the issues that we discovered was the challenge of people really understanding how to ride the bus. And I know there's great information on the website, I've looked at that, Stephanie, but I'm just wondering about the education component that you spoke to earlier in your presentation and whether perhaps you've reached out to, say, local outreaches and community livings and those sorts of organizations to work with them to help, to help their clients really understand the system of simply.
Yes, through you, Warden. So that, I think that question is kind of twofold. So as a result of COVID, many volunteer agencies are just not able to offer the same volunteer services that they had before. And my concern at this time would be our capacity is already very limited on the bus. So I wouldn't want to add any additional passengers to provide advice because that would take away from seating on the bus. What I can offer and what we are doing in the first week is we are having, you know, Driver's Seat is going to be out there in full force that we will do our best to educate and I will be out there as well on the first week trying to travel around to the different stops and providing that education. So we will. But the second piece to that is if there are individuals with disabilities that are traveling our bus and whether it be cognitive or physical, they are allowed to travel with a support worker who may be able to provide that additional support and explanation on how to use the bus. And I'm happy to work with our community living agencies to assist them. I've actually had some agencies reach out to me and ask if they can book the seats for their clients on their behalf, just because that may be a challenge for some of their clients. So we are creating those relationships and we are providing third-party billing and different things like that with our agencies, with our specialized populations. So I appreciate the sentiment and I know what we're trying to achieve and where we want to go with education because transit is new in Gray County, so we want to make sure we're educating everyone on it. And we will get there. Just COVID is kind of hard to add all those extra bodies in at this time.
Hey, anything else, Councilor Kivony?
Um, no, that's great, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And I guess there'll be lots of cleaning protocols that will be done by Driver's Seat, I presume. And it's good to see that you have the, the students and the senior discount that some of us may take advantage of. And also the, if you've reached out to a number of the businesses through Gray County, maybe through Economic Development has to inform them about this new availability for employees to be able to take advantage of and stuff like that.
Mr. Warden, we are working with our Economic Development Team and we will be doing, you know, some more communications and more blasts out to our businesses. Once I have a complete package with all the schedules finalized, I do intend to go out to our businesses and the communities to put, hand these things out in paper format so people have access to them. So I will be doing boots on the ground, going in person to meet with our businesses to ensure that everyone knows about the service.
Good, yeah, because certainly for, for businesses in Gray County and, you know, getting employees and stuff like that and, you know, sourcing them is sometimes a tough thing, right? And I presume the wheels, I presume the wheels on the bus go round and round?
Yes, they do.
Come on, Councilor Millen, you can smile there. All right, so we have this, any further questions? This is, this is great news for Gray County and Council Burley, we can maybe get some people up to that airport as well. All right, so this was moved by Council Hutchinson and Council Millen. Seeing there's no other comments, anybody opposed to this? Hearing none, that is carried. Well, thanks, Stephanie, and keep up the good work and promotion, 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 right?
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. All right, so moving on then to our next report with regards to the development charge bylaw. And this was moved by Council O'Leary and second by Council Hutchinson. And I know Kevin and Randy are sort of team, sort of working together on this, but I was told that maybe Randy's gonna take the lead on this. So good afternoon, Randy, it's afternoon now, so welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Warden, and good afternoon, everyone. So the purpose of this report is to propose changes to the county's development bylaws to encourage more rental housing, nonprofit housing and detached additional dwelling units by exempting these developments from a county DC. Other proposed changes to the bylaws include alignment with the recent changes to the Development Charges Act, supporting incentives related to municipal community improvement plans as well as the county's community improvement plan program and considering DC credits for qualifying redevelopment projects. These proposed changes align with a policy direction and recolor gray being the county's official plan and align with direction previously provided by council. We should note that we also had Henson Consulting review the proposed changes to the DC bylaws as they are the county's current development charges consultant. So what we'll do is we'll provide an overview of the proposed changes to the bylaws and then outline next steps in terms of moving forward should committee of whole support the proposed changes as outlined in the report. So as council is aware, there is an ongoing need for more affordable housing throughout Gray County. And more importantly, rental housing, nonprofit housing and additional secondary dwelling units. Through the recolor gray process, we heard from residents on a number of occasions about the need for more affordable housing and the need for more rental housing. The current average vacancy rate for rental housing is quite low. It's approximately 1.9%. The current provincial average is 2%. And a healthy housing market vacancy rate is considered to be between 3% to 4%. We're also hearing from employers indicating that their employees are finding it difficult to find affordable housing near their place of work as well as we're hearing from newcomers to Gray County who are indicating it's difficult to find housing options that are affordable. In the fall of 2019, council supported in principle changes to the development charges bylaws to exempt rental housing, nonprofit housing and detached additional dwelling units from a county DC. Council also will changes to the DC bylaw to align with the changes in, to the Development Charges Act. In December 2019, the province proclaimed some of the changes to, to the act. And in July of this year, the province made further changes to the Development Charges Act as part of Bill 197, being the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act. Some of the sections of the Development Charges Act have been proclaimed to date. And we, and some of the associated regulations have, have not been released yet. However, based on recent changes made to the act, staff believe we have enough information to move forward now with the proposed changes to the county DC bylaws at this time. So now just to give an overview of, of the proposed changes to the bylaws. So the DC Act allows municipalities to exempt certain types of development from development charges. And in certain types of development are already exempt under our current bylaws. For example, additional secondary dwelling units constructed within or attached to an existing residential unit are exempt from a county development charge. Non-residential development is also currently exempt in our county development charges bylaw. To help address the need for more, more affordable housing options, the proposal is to exempt, as I mentioned, purpose-built rental housing, nonprofit housing and additional dwelling units. This would allow developers to reduce their overall development costs which could make a rental project more viable and may allow developers or homeowners to proceed with rental projects earlier than originally anticipated. It would also free up capital costs, which could potentially be invested in more rental housing builds or adding more units to a proposed build. And if there were more rental housing options, some people may sell their existing homes and move into a rental unit to either downsize or to free up equity in their existing house, which in turn would free up more housing supply. So just to provide an overview of the changes, so the first change, as I mentioned, is exempting all new purpose-built rental units. And this exemption would apply to any rental housing units that are designed and built expressly for long-term accommodation. It would include such housing types as rental apartments, rental townhouses or rental dorm-style units. A definition for purpose-built rentals has been included in the proposed amendments to the bylaws. And we stole this from one of the draft regulations under the DC Act that hasn't been proclaimed yet but has been drafted. And the definition is four or more dwelling units, all of which are intended for use as rented residential premises. In order to ensure that these developments stay as rentals over a period of time, for example, 20 years, staff are recommending that an agreement be entered into with the owner that would be registered on title. Staff are proposing that we monitor this, the overall average vacancy rate. And if the rate returns to healthy levels, then council could reinstate a development charge for rental housing units as a future update to the DC bylaw. In terms of potential loss of revenue for exempting rental housing units, there are four rental development projects that staff are aware of over the past several years that have either been built or currently being proposed or under construction. These rental developments have or will create a total of 125 rental units. So we've estimated, and this is over the last, say, five years. So this equates approximately $100,000 per year on average of potential lost revenue if, if rental units were exempted. This loss of revenue is considered minor if it will help result in more rental housing being created. The second exemption is exempting all residential housing developments constructed by either nonprofit organizations or development projects that are supported through funding provided by our county housing department or through the National Housing Strategy. And by exempting these units, we hope that this will result in more affordable housing being created throughout the county. This exemption could include housing built by Habitat for Humanity, Community Living, the Own Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, the Blue Mountains Attainable Housing Corporation, as well as other nonprofit housing organizations. There have been some private residential elements that have also received funding from the county in the past through the investment in affordable housing program. The example, one of the examples is the Durham Project. Normally, the county has provided a grant in lieu of, of development charges for those projects. However, what we're recommending is that these projects, if they receive funding through a housing department or through the National Housing Strategy, would just be exempted. A definition for nonprofit housing development has been included in the draft bylaws. And again, this aligns with the definition in the draft regulations in the Development Charges Act. It would also include other types of development as noted. Over the past several years, there have been approximately 60 nonprofit housing units that have been constructed, which is approximately 12 units on average per year. Most of these units have been apartments or other multiple residential units. So assuming that average, we, we anticipate an average of about $50,000 in lost revenue per year. Staff are aware of an additional 100 units that are being proposed and, and as you heard from Anne Marie's report earlier, there could even be more units, which is fantastic. So if nonprofit housing were exempted, this would result in a loss of DC revenue. But again, we feel that over a period of time, it would average out, we think, approximately $50,000 per year. Again, staff feel that this is a minor loss considering the overall benefits that are provided by having more affordable housing options for Gray County residents. Staff also hope that by nonprofit saving on development charge costs that these savings can then be used to construct more affordable housing units. The third exemption we're proposing is detached additional dwelling units. So the current county development charge bylaw exempts additional dwelling units that are within or attached to an existing dwelling. And the proposed amendment would also exempt detached additional dwelling units on the same property as well as any new units that are being constructed. If they wanted to put in a basement apartment as part of that new build, that would also be exempted based on our current proposed bylaw changes. So for example, if a property owner wanted to construct an attached additional dwelling unit in their backyard as a laneway housing unit or construct a detached garage with an additional dwelling unit built above or attached to that garage, then a county development charge would not apply. This aligns with the province's recent changes to Planning Act that requires municipalities to permit additional dwelling units both within, attached and attached to an existing dwelling. Draft regulations have been provided by the province for additional dwelling units. These haven't been proclaimed to date, but again, we feel that based on the direction from the province, we don't, we're not likely to see any changes to the draft regulations. In 2018, a total of 11 additional dwelling units were built throughout the county. And in 2019, we saw 14 additional or secondary dwelling units. It's not known whether these were within attached or an existing dwelling, but we've just assumed that a total potential revenue loss based on our current exemptions and based on the proposed exemptions is approximately $75,000 to $100,000 each year. This, again, represents a relatively minor loss when compared to the overall DC revenue collected by the county. Some of the other proposed changes that we're proposing as part of this is, is including what we're calling a development charge deferral policy. So throughout the past few years, the county has accepted development charge requests for several development projects with the premise that the projects were providing more affordable attainable housing options. Some examples include life lease developments as well as purpose-built rental conversion projects. The proposed changes to the bylaws would include a reference to a deferral policy be created which would outline criteria for when county would consider, consider entering into a DC deferral agreement. Staff are recommending that the policy be a separate document to the bylaw and this would allow council to amend the policy without triggering an update to the bylaw. It should be noted that the province's recent changes to the act requires municipalities to defer charges for purpose-built rental housing, nonprofit and institution developments. You may recall that previous report where we talked about interest rates with respect to those required deferrals. Based on the proposed exemptions for rental housing and nonprofit housing and based on the county's current DC bylaw not applying a charge to non-residential developments, the required deferrals under the DC Act would no longer be applicable to the county's development charges based on the proposed changes. So in order to consider other deferrals beyond what's required under the act, staff are recommending that the deferral policy identify other types of development that could be considered. And what staff are recommending are any development that is proposing housing units that meet accessibility for Ontario Disability Standard Act standards. So any housing that meets those standards would be eligible potentially for a deferral until time of occupancy. Other rental developments that would not be eligible for exemption would also be considered. So things like triplex rental buildings, because as you remember, the definition we're proposing is four or more units. But if someone was proposing a triplex rental unit or building, they would also be potentially eligible for at least a deferral. Condo apartments or life lease developments are also something that we're recommending be considered for a deferral until time of occupancy. For developments that meet that criteria, a deferral agreement would be required, which would need to be registered on title. We are recommending, similar to the other deferral agreements, that the Director of Corporate Services and the Director of Planning be delegated the ability to sign these agreements. If a D C deferral request is received that does not meet that criteria, council could still consider those. That would just need to come forward through a written request that council would have to consider through a meeting. Council can charge an interest on the funds deferred and to be consistent with the interest rate that council approved previously for the D C rate freezes, we're recommending that that be the same, which is currently three point five percent. Again, this is in line with Canada's prime rate, as well as the county's average indexing of development charge rate over the last three years. The next proposed change that we're proposing is redevelopment credits. So the proposed changes to the bylaws would consider credits for what we're calling redevelopment projects. For example, if a commercial building is being converted to residential units, a credit would be provided in the amount of what the commercial D C rate would have been if a county non-residential rate was applied to the commercial space. And this would be discounted from the residential charge. The calculated non-res rate identified in the latest D C background study was just under thirty-four dollars per square meter in two thousand and sixteen. To, using the index rates that were applied to the residential rate, the non-res index rate would be under, in two thousand and twenty, would be just under thirty-eight dollars per square meter. Although the county has never collected a non-residential charge in the past, this credit recognizes that there is at least a like-for-like in the amount of services provided by the county for the current commercial use as it will be for the future residential use. So recognizes that services are already being provided to those commercial uses. And so there's at least a like-for-like in the services that are already being provided that should be credited to the new residential conversions that are being proposed. We think that this appear, this is a more fair approach than what is currently identified in our bylaw. In terms of actual building conversions, there have been, we don't have an exact value or number, but there have been a few conversions over the past several years. So we may see more requests as well in the future to convert commercial space to residential space, given that there is less demand for commercial space, and this has been further intensified by the pandemic. If a credit were to be applied, this will result in a slight reduction in D C revenue to be collected. And we would monitor that over time to see what that potentially would be. The next proposed change is exempting development charges for approved community improvement plan projects. So county council supported a community improvement plan program in two thousand and nineteen. And local municipalities are currently working on updates to their existing C I Ps or working on adopting the new community improvement plan to align with the new C I P program. The C I P program is designed to provide incentives for encouraging certain types of developments, including attainable housing stock, vacant brownfield development, downtown revitalization, and adaptive reuse of commercial, industrial, and institutional buildings. Staff are recommending that when a county D C charge applies to a development that has received a grant through a community improvement plan program, that a D C, that they'd be exempted from a county development charge. Again, this would help to further encourage the types of priority developments that council has wants to see happen throughout the county and would also align with the recent changes made to the county's fees and services bylaw to recognize that any fees and services, such as planning application fees, could also be waived or exempted in accordance with the community improvement plan. It's too early to tell what revenue impact this would have. Our staff, again, would monitor this over time through the C I P monitoring. In terms of the next section, the amendments based on D C Act changes, and I'm almost done. I apologize for the length. The report highlights a number of recent changes that have made to the D C Act by the province. And the proposed bylaw amendments have been drafted, again, to align with those proposed changes to the D C Act where applicable. There are a number of changes that have made to the act that have not been proclaimed to date. And these include additional eligible services that municipalities can collect a D C for, such as childcare and early years programs and services, housing services, services related to proceedings under the Provincial Fences Act, and services related to emergency preparedness. The D C Act changes will also remove the ten percent discount for eligible services. So these are definitely changes that I think will benefit the county going forward. As I mentioned, they haven't been proclaimed to date. But the county can consider these further changes as part of the next five-year update to the county development charge bylaws, which will occur in two thousand and twenty-one. So again, I apologize for the length of presentation. It's a lot of information that we know in this, in this report, as well as being proposed in these bylaw changes. But that just provides an overview of those changes that we are proposing. It should be noted that there may be revisions to those bylaws prior to the public meeting, just to address overall mechanics and how these exemptions and deferrals are going to be administered. In terms of next steps, should committees support these amendments in principle? Staff will post those bylaw changes along with this report for review and comment on the county website. We will also email the proposed amendments to local municipalities, developers, consultants, and other agencies looking for comments. A public meeting, we're looking at scheduling a virtual public meeting in October. And a notice of the public meeting will be posted on the county website and posted in local newspapers. And then following that public meeting, we'll summarize all the comments we receive and bring back a report with a final revised version of the bylaws for council's consideration, which we're hoping to do in November or early December. And again, I apologize for the length. I don't know if Kevin has anything further to add to that presentation, but we were happy to take any questions that council may have.
I don't think you missed anything, Randy. So thank you very much for that. That's really good. And Kevin, do you have any before I go questions or?
Not really. Randy's done a good job, but I'd like to reiterate it. It'd be a process here that we're looking for consultation on this. So there, changes can be made based on the comments that we receive from local municipalities or anybody on this as well.
So Mr. Warden, I have questions from Counselor O'Leary and Counselor Millen.
So Kevin, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you just switch your video off and just sort of say the last few minutes that you just said there?
Apparently, I would just like to.
Kevin, his video was very broken there. So I don't know. Maybe if there's a question comes there, so.
I think Kevin just noted that, making sure that, so we're going to be noted this report and for comments and consultation with local municipalities. And obviously, we're open to having any further discussions with local staff if there's any specific questions on the proposed changes to the county D C bylaws.
Thanks for that, Randy. I just, I just wanted, maybe, maybe not everybody heard me. I think we're having a little bit of an internet issue here at the county. But I think maybe we're all good. So thank you for that, Randy. Madam, questions? I didn't quite catch you what you were saying. I was sort of.
That's okay. Counselors O'Leary and Millen.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam. Counselor O'Leary, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Randy. Thanks, Randy, for the presentation. I just want to be clear on a situation of, I'll use the Stratocona Apartments as an example. If those development charges get waived and in two thousand and thirty, that building gets sold and the new owner wants to switch it over to condos, then the development charges will be applicable. Will they be the amount that was deferred from two thousand and twenty, or will they be updated to two thousand and thirty? And that's all registered on title. So that would, would that transfer, or would it be updated with the amount? So is that a Randy or Kevin question? I'm not sure.
I'll take a stab at it. Yeah, great question. That's a great example of an ongoing proposed development that we're excited to see happen. With respect to that, it's, so what it would be is, for that, we've already entered into an agreement for that development. And the way the agreement's written is that the development charges are due based on what, when they issued the permit. Because normally, development charges are based on, are paid or when the permit is issued, building permit is issued. So the current agreement recognizes that what would have been due at time of building permit. It also recognizes that if the development charge bylaw changes, that there may not be any charge. But as you pointed to, Counselor O'Leary, if down the road, they were to propose as a, to convert those to a condominium development, what staff are proposing is that we would enter into, in this case, another agreement with that developer, as well as any future developers, that if they propose to change or convert that, say, within a twenty-year period of when the charge would have been due, then they would owe the development charges that would have been to a time of building permit. So whenever that timeframe would be, so say, for example, if they got the building permit this year, they would owe the development charges as it stands in two thousand and twenty and not when they are proposing their conversion, if that makes sense.
Good, good. Thank you very much. Good question. All right. Next, I have Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Randy, is it still a requirement for a municipality to make up the difference of D Cs that have been exempted, you know, on an annual basis, to make up the loss that you spoke to out of general taxation?
Randy?
Because as you pointed out, in the grand scheme of things, it's a relatively small dollar amount. But I think it's important to recognize that as taxpayers, we still need to fund that infrastructure somehow. So that money has to be, you know, everybody else has to pitch into the pot to make up the difference. Is that still the case?
That's a great question. We had the exact same question and discussion with our development charges consultant yesterday, actually. So with respect to that, basically, and Kevin can jump in here too, because this is getting more of the financial weeds a little bit. But basically, I'll just use the current example. Our current development charge bylaw doesn't have a non-residential charge. So when we did the development charges background study, using the growth forecasting, ninety-two percent of the overall county development charge is residential. Eight percent is non-residential charge. So what we do when we move forward with a capital project that is a growth-related, charge-related project, we're only using ninety-two percent of the eligible development charges for that project because we've exempted, or council's exempted, the non-residential component of that project. So we don't have to fund back, necessarily back into what we're exempting through reserves. But we have to calculate it based on what we've actually are going to be collecting and what we then can apply through a development charge or an eligible development cost that we collect through development charges. Does that make sense? I don't know if Kevin can explain it a little bit easier, but basically, the story is, no, we don't have to fund that back in reserve. We just have to adjust what we apply as a growth-related cost or eligible revenue to, towards that capital project. So the remaining balance essentially has to come from other sources. That's through either tax levy or through other funding sources in order to make up that difference.
So you're essentially, so you're essentially prorating the amount that you charge upfront to make up for that eight percent in your example that you're talking about.
Correct.
So at the end of the day, so at the end of the day, we still have the same amount of money that our D C study shows that we need to fund the infrastructure. Is that what you're telling me?
Can I, can I jump in here?
Yeah, turn your camera, turn your camera on, Kevin. I'd love to see you. There you go. All right. Go, leave, go.
Well, what I think is, Kevin, if you start to get garbled, you might have to switch back. Just, I know we're having some problems with the internet here, but go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll try. Yes, so that, it has, that we still, we're not, we're not changing the capital program in any way. Those gross costs for those capital projects are still there. So while we're funding what we say is being collected from the D C reserve, the balance, the more that we add is exempted, is then going to have to come from others, other sources such as taxation.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Any further questions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Counselor Mackey.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden, and Randy, thanks for the lengthy report. I certainly agree with the intended purpose. Just wondering around, you know, some of the detached units that may be on a property, you know, with detached garage. How do we ensure that it is for a long-term affordable housing and doesn't become a short-term rental or Airbnb?
Okay, I don't know if Randy or Kevin got that question here. A little garbled there, Counselor Mackey. Go ahead.
I was, I heard the question. It was a good question. So basically, from a county policy perspective, we don't have, we wouldn't have any control over whether or not that would remain as a, as a short-term rental versus a long-term rental. There are some municipalities, such as the Town of Blue Mountains, does have bylaw in place that regulates short-term accommodations. To my knowledge, that's the only municipality in Gray County that has moved forward with a program such as that. So outside of controlling the actual short-term accommodation or long-term accommodation through a separate bylaw process, there would be really no mechanism to really control whether or not that could be a long-term rental or a short-term accommodation.
So basically, there's nothing to control it, is what you're saying, Randy?
Yeah, so we're, there may be the odd time where, yeah, someone could offer that up as a short-term accomod- accommodation. We're hoping that, you know, that in most cases, that will not be the case because the demand is there for, that the residents need more long-term accommodation rental units. And so based on that demand, we're hoping that that demand will be taken up by some landowners who want to add a secondary unit to their dwelling.
Hey, Scott. I mean, but that also, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate that, you know, most people will likely do the right thing. I'd just hate to see some take advantage of no D C charge and then, you know, create a small business on their property or convert above their garage into accommodation for guests on the weekend, you know, under the premise of being a long-term rental. But, thank you.
Okay, thank you for Scott. And just for clarity, Randy, Gray Highlands has already also put in a policy with regards to Airbnb. It's a little different than Blue Mountains, but we certainly have been working through this for the last two and a half years through Michelle as well. So dealing with those issues of concern, I think that Counselor Mackey has raised for sure. Other questions, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, well, fantastic report there, Randy. And I'm sure glad we've moved forward with regards to the detached, to be exempt from development charges. That's something that I think was raised even in the last term of council, I think, of county council. So it takes time to get there and certainly seeing that there's a shortage for rentals. And hopefully, as Counselor Mackey is saying, that those rentals become long-term rentals. And also, I think, for a long, for young people and seniors as well, family members and non-family members as well. So.
Absolutely.
But, so that's been moved. Again, I'll just reiterate, that's been moved by Counselor O'Leary and second by Counselor Hutchinson. Is there anybody opposed, sorry, yeah, anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, seeing none, that is carried. Okay, we have one more report. And this is with regards to a county official plan amendment. And this is moved by Counselor O'Leary and Counselor, sorry, Counselor Hicks and Counselor Mackey. I can't even read my printing here. So that's been moved a second. And I think, Randy, you're taking on this report as well?
Hiba is going to take this report.
Okay, I had you down, but that's quite fine. She'll do just as great a job as yourself.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm going to just be putting on.
Good afternoon, Council. Um, I'm going to just be putting on a presentation. So my report is, is concerning um, a county official plan amendment, OPA four, that affects um, the property number four, two, three, zero, uh, two, zero Harbor Drive. The subject lands are located at lot five and six and part lot seven, Broken Front Concession, geographic township of Sidneyham, now in the municipality of Meaford. Um, the surrounding lands are, um, are, are, the subject lands are surrounded by rural lands to the east and to the south. Um, to the west of the property is a, um, a, 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 an older rural residential subdivision. And to the north is uh, of, north to the property is Georgian Bay. The proposed development would consider acceptance to the transportation policies in the county official plan um, in, in sections uh, of move gray agricultural and rules to permit lot creation where the remnant lot has access via an unopened road, a municipal road allowance. Um, as the subject lands are approximately thirty-seven point six hectares in total. Um, the severed portions of the land will be approximately nineteen point eight hectares in size with approximately twenty-six meters of frontage on Queens Bush Road. The retained parcel of land will cont- add that currently contains nine seasonal cottages will maintain. Um, I has, uh, will have an area of seventeen point eight hectares and will continue to have access from a municipal unopened road allowance, Harbor Drive. Uh, the severed lands, as mentioned, will have access, a road access to an open maintained public road. The retained lots will not be permitted new development through these applications until such a time as proper road access is ensured or the road is upgraded to municipal standards. A joint public meeting was held for the official plan and zoning um, uh, by law application at municipality of Meaford Council on July twenty-eight, twenty twenty. This is um, a, a, a map of, of the proposed consent. As we can see, the retained parcel that currently contains the nine um, cottages has access off the municipal, unopened municipal road allowance, whereas the severed parcel will continue to have that twenty-six meter um, road frontage off of Queens Bush Drive. Um, no agency comments were received from Enbridge Gas and Historic Soggy Matee and um, they, they mentioned they had no concerns that this application, uh, received comments from Gray Sobble Conservation Authority and, and they just wanted um, uh, the, a condition to be included as part of the approval of this uh, of this application that is zoning by law amendment be applied to the lands that are, that identifies the hazard lands on the property. Um, as of date, uh, the zoning by law has been brought forward to the municipality of Meaford and the zoning by law has been approved. No public comments were received on the subject application. Um, just looking at some of the planning policies, um, the proposed routine lot currently and following the proposed consent would have access to a, a, an unopened municipal road allowance, Harbor Drive. Um, bef- uh, bef- uh, before this proposal was brought forward, um, the, the two properties were um, separate properties but accidentally merged on title. Um, and now they're bringing back forward this application to um, uh, re-sever the lots that previously existed. Um, so the, the routine or the retained lot has always had access off of um, an unopened, uh, unopened road allowance, um, uh, Harbor Drive. No development, as I mentioned, will be permitted on the retained land until a time that um, the, the road has been upgraded uh, to ensure that safety um, of, 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 of all of development is there. Uh, the municipality has not identified any issues with poor sight lines or, or the intersection. Um, so the municipality, municipality has mentioned that there's no safety concerns with allowing the severance to move forward. Um, and the municipality of Meaford Planning Department prepared a report in February of this year that addressed this issue of lot creation on a municipal road allowance. Um, the staff concluded in that report that it was in the interest of the municipality to maintain the land in municipal ownership versus selling the, uh, unopened road allowance to the applicant to turn it into a private road. Um, the applicant planner has indicated that the applicant is open to discussion with respect to an agreement with the municipality. Um, the municipality of Meaford, as I have mentioned, has determined that it is in their municipal interest to allow for the lot creation uh, where the retained lot has access to an unopened municipal road allowance, um, until they've been able to complete a formal inventory of their road system. Um, staff are of the opinion that uh, the proposed official plan amendment is consistent with planning policies such as Planning Act, PPS twenty and the Meaford Official Plan, and it does conform to the goals and intents of the county official plan. Um, uh, my recommendation um, for this uh, report, PDR CW thirty-one twenty be that it be received and proposed official plan for um, of the county official plan to consider exceptions to the transportation policies in move gray agriculture and rural sections be permit uh, to permit law creation where the remnant lot has access via unopened municipal road allowance. That the proposed official plan amendment for be supported to redesignate the land from a rule to rule with exceptions on the subject property. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thanks, Hiba, and uh, I'm not sure if we can go back to all county council there, so I can. Madam Clerk, is there any questions there from anyone?
No, sir, not that I can see.
I don't know if Mayor Columbus has anything to add or not, maybe not. I just wasn't uh, asking her to speak to it other than it is in her municipality and uh, the recommendation here is to support, so.
I see Counselor Body.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Body.
I'm just wondering, is this uh, on wells and septic beds or is there water and, and full sewer service?
Um, so Counselor Compass, maybe that's maybe to you or, or Counselor Keebney? Or Hiba, I'm not sure who is, who would like to answer that.
It is on well and septic.
So, so to follow up on that, uh, how can this possibly be good planning that uh, meets the requirements of the provincial policy statement? We're continuing to build, uh, take up farmland. We're continuing to put housing and uh, urban settings on uh, on rural services. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, Meaford declared a climate emergency, maybe they didn't, but there's not a school there, there's not a grocery store there, there isn't any services there. They're miles from the next community, so everyone's going to have to drive in. I, I just don't see why we keep doing this and uh, and how it's good planning. You, you know, we should be doing this type of urban development in uh, close to an urban setting. Um, I, I, I just, it astonishes me as we move forward with climate change how we're going to keep putting houses out in um, further away with no transportation, nothing uh, and then say that we're doing something. I, I just see it as a conflict. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Body. Uh, Hiba, do you have uh, any comments? I guess there was a public, public meeting as well.
Yes, so I just want to reiterate that the sever- or the retained parcel will not be permitted to allow any development until um, the, the, the road has been upgraded um, to a municipal standard. Um, the, the development, um, the severed portion i- is permitted to develop and, and, and the lot density on this property has not been met, so the severance will not exceed that lot density policies that we do have in our po- in, in our plan. Um, in, in, in terms of servicing, um, the Gray Sobble reviewed um, this application and, 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 um, and they had no concerns with development along, along the shoreline or in terms of the hazards, they have been able to identify developable area in the severed portion that will, uh, will not impact the hazards or the shoreline. Um, so it's from their perspective, um, they don't foresee any impact to, to the natural heritage or the hazards with a development being allowed on the severed portion, which does have access to um, um, a municipal road.
Are, are you able to also speak to the uh, provincial policy that was brought forward from uh, Counsel Body? You mentioned about the provincial policy with regards to the policy that's in place. I, I, I'm under the understanding that provincial policy, the last, if, if you don't have services or have services, septic and wells are allowed only if there are no other options. Is that correct? Or is that how I, how the provincial policy is ruled out?
Correct, so there is a hierarchy of servicing, um, that the PPS does highlight. Um, so in settlement areas, we do, um, uh, we do require um, uh, full servicing if that is available. Um, so just in terms of the hierarchy, if, if, if it's in rural lands and, and, and it's not, it is feasible to uh, put property or development on, on septic and wells and it, it is in a negative impact to the, to the environment, then it is permissible within the PPS. I'm not sure if Randy has anything to add to that servicing piece, but.
No, other than what Hiba's already indicated, there's no new development that's being proposed with respect to um, um, this particular application. Again, it recognizes that what was once already existed, the lots merged on title. Um, there is uh, nine cottages uh, that are on the, uh, the one parcel. Um, but as Hiba indicated there, if there was any new development that's proposed on that, they would have to upgrade the municipal road. They would also then have to demonstrate that any, whatever that development would look like, would have to meet um, would have no impacts to the environment, uh, when it comes to uh, any servicing that would have to be proposed to service that, that development. Um, and as Hiba indicated, the provincial policy um, does consider um, a new development on well and septic. The preference is no doubt for sure full services and, and we tr- uh, in our policies, our official plan direct to the majority of their growth to fully serviced settlement areas.
Well, thank you, Hiba and Randy. Any follow-up on that, Counsel Body? I know, uh, just want to get that clear.
No, I've, I've made my point. Thanks, Hiba, for the, uh, for the report. It's well done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further questions then to this report? Madam Clerk, anything from anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. And again, just to iterate, this was uh, moved by Counselor Hicks and, and second by Counselor Mackey. Anybody opposed to this motion? I hear none. Uh, that's, that's
See Counselor Hicks, sorry, Counselor Hicks has his hand up as in opposition.
Okay, so let me just go through that again and I'll flick the screens. Uh, is anybody in opposi- so anybody opposed to this resolution? So I can flip my screen. So I have Counselor Hicks.
Counselor Leary opposed.
Counselor Leary.
Counselor Leary and Counselor Body?
And Counselor Millen.
Counselor, okay. And so then, uh, that will keep, be carried because the majority who didn't oppose it through the process, okay? So that's carried. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Warden, I wonder, um, the joint accessibility advisory committees were pulled from the consent. And before we move into the masking um, bylaw discussion and the closed session, I wondered with council's permission if we could um, put that on now rather than at the very end. Um, Counselor Compass had requested it be pulled, and I think just with the discussions with Stephanie's report, it's likely her questions have been answered, but um, I want thoughts to, perhaps we could put it there before we went to closed session.
Nope, thank you for that, Madam Clerk, and that was item H, as I had indicated on my sheet, and uh, so with, is, is anybody opposed to going there now from county council? Okay, I, I'm hearing none, so we'll go to that. And uh, Counselor Compass, uh, you had pulled the minutes of the joint accessibility advisory committee. Minutes of uh, August twenty-fifth. We will need to move and second those minutes because they were pulled from that, but uh, at this time, I will let it give you the, I'll give you the floor. Okay, uh, Compass, do I have a second or? I, I can only see, I, I see I see Counselor Potter just on my one screen here. So, okay, so the floor is yours, Counselor Compass?
Uh, thanks very much, Mr. Warden, and, and I did want to, to pull this, just to ask the question uh, regarding future plans for accessible buses and uh, any ideas that had come out of the accessibility uh, committee for that eventuality, but Stephanie's report was very thorough. Uh, discussion that followed certainly asked, answered a lot of uh, of my questions and my concerns and the concerns of our accessibility um, committee as well. So I thank you for that, and uh, I'm happy to support this now.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Are there any other questions from county council before I ask for your position on this motion? I see none, Madam Clerk. Anybody opposed to these minutes? Hearing none, that's carried. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll go back to item I then on our committee of the whole meeting, um, with regards to verbal update on masking bylaw. And I'm looking at my, uh, I don't have that, there's no motion here, so I guess uh, it's a verbal report, and I guess I'm going to Madam CIO on uh, on this, or am I going to?
No, Madam, uh, Madam CIO will do this.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Warden, and Counsel, I'm just going to share my screen with you. Um, we have a short presentation here. The purpose of this discussion is to um, walk you through the principles that we intend to use in the um, masking bylaw, the face covering bylaw that will come forward to the next meeting. I take you through these principles. Just keep note if there are things that you have questions or concerns about. I just want to hear those so that we can um, understand where concerns lie and what adjustments we might need to make. So I'm just going to share my screen.
So while you're doing that, Madam CEO, do we have Dr. Era on the line uh, for questions, or is he left?
No, he's been involved in this discussion.
Okay.
As we prepare here, okay.
Okay.
All right, so as I say, this is the, uh, the core concepts of the face covering bylaw as we understand them at this point. Um, that we have been under an order and continue to be under an order from the medical officer of health requiring face coverings uh, to be worn to prevent the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus. Developing a bylaw is, has been and continues to be a joint effort with the medical officer of health and with Bruce County. While Dr. Era has extended his order now for an additional twenty-eight days as of yesterday, um, the intent here is to replace that order um, with a bylaw that would be the same in the two counties. We would likely need to retain this bylaw in place until the threat of the pandemic has passed. Uh, but we intend to build in at least an annual review into the process. Going to a bylaw from an order allows enforcement to take place um, across Gray and Bruce consistently by a wider group of actors. Not only the health inspectors, but bylaw enforcement officers, police, et cetera. So the core requirements of a bylaw would be, it would apply to those over the age of two and those who are not, don't have some other exemption. It would ask people to wear a face covering um, in a pu- in an enclosed public place. Um, when that place is open to the public, except if it's been exempted, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, a face covering as defined by the proposed bylaw can be a medical or non-medical mask, anything that can cover the nose and the mouth and the chin. Um, it presents a barrier to the transmission of the infectious droplet, so we're not deviating from the order uh, that Dr. Era currently has in place. Um, the, where does it apply? In an enclosed place, except where there exists an exemption. So an enclosed place is somewhere that has uh, four walls and a floor and a ceiling. The medical officer of health can issue exemptions for specific facilities. Um, either a specific location or a type of facility. And we'll get into that in a, in a moment. Um, open to the public means that it applies to all persons to, in the area when that place is open. Um, there's not an intent to require masking at, at other times. I think it's important to um, note as well that what we're looking to do here is to continue um, to, you know, make sure that the public understands how important it is that we all play the role of doing the right thing and preventing infection. Um, but like all bylaws, they're undertaken on a complaint basis, right? I don't think there's any expectation that um, any of our enforcement personnel are, are going out and seeking to undertake enforcement. I anticipate that this is something that I anticipate that this is something that would be done because there was an issue. Masks are not required, as I said, if you're under two years old, if the facility is exempted. If there's some necessity to accommodate a disability or there's a protection under the Human Rights Code. As an individual person, you are to wear a mask if you're responsible for a dependent individual, like a little child, then you should ensure that they wear a mask. Not to tamper with signage that's on the outside of a place of business and to not obstruct or make false statements to enforcement personnel. The facility or location owner or operator should, is responsible for developing an exception policy if they feel that something like that's required. And there's probably some discussion that's needed there to make sure that the signage is posted on the doorway. So people are aware of what their responsibilities are. And should someone attend that place and not be compliant, to take reasonable steps to ask them or, you know, to tell them that they can seek services another way or to leave the premises. The Medical Officer of Health and the county's responsibilities. The Dr. Era can issue exemptions where it's appropriate. Gray and Bruce County, we want to take a coordinated enforcement approach with each other, with each of our lower tier municipalities and with public health to make sure that everybody has the same understanding and is approaching this in the same way. I do have a meeting with all of our Gray County CAOs tomorrow morning and I will be talking all of the, what's proposed in the bylaw through with them tomorrow. There are penalties proposed in the bylaw for not wearing a face covering, for tampering with the information or failing to post silent signage or other offenses. Ticket fines, if you're not going to object to the fine, then what we're saying here is that you would be on a first offense, be charged $100 for not wearing a face mask. And other compliance orders and injunctions are also available and Michael will take us into that in more detail if you wish, enclosed. So that's what I have so far. A lot of work's been done, both with our legal, with the health unit, the health units legal and with the staff at Bruce County. We really want to make this as straightforward as we can for the public and for our enforcement personnel. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to take them now or I know Michael can give you some additional advice around enforcement if you so wish, but we should go into close to do that.
Okay, thanks, Madam CEO. So I guess at this point, in the sense of general questions, we can take general questions at this point?
Correct.
Yeah, there's legal questions that we need, you're saying maybe we need to go in camera. So I see Counselor Mackey, there's probably a whole bunch. I will not try to miss anybody, Madam Clerk. Is there somebody who went first or?
Counselor Mellon, Mackey and Robinson.
Okay, I wrote those down and I do see the chat sometimes too. You can always flip them up there as well. So, okay, we'll go to Counselor Mellon first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kim, the, I think it was the last one you had up on the screen there. A failure to post signage. Is that a generic sign to say, you know, mask is required upon entry? Or what type of signage are we talking about? Or is it sufficient to tell people when they come in that they must have a mask on?
It's my understanding that that signage should be posted, like, I mean, that's a piece of paper on the doorway, the entryway that advises people so that they're aware before they come in to the business. We have proposed language for, for that signage, if that's, you know, useful to folks, they don't have to try and make it up on their own.
Wear a mask isn't good enough?
I just, I thought it was a little, I don't know, odd that the fine, the starting fine proposed is higher for not having the sign than it is for not wearing the mask. But anyway, that's, that's fine. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Do you have a follow up on that, Madam CEO?
No, I think, I think that's, I think that's a place where we might want to involve Michael for some comments there. Yeah.
I'll make an order of that. Okay. And so you're saying, Madam CEO, we keep a track and if there's a number of points that we need to get some further.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll keep track there. Maybe you will as well. Counselor Mackey is next then.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And thanks, Kim and Michael for all the work on this. I know it's not easy. My only struggle from what I've seen is the, the possible responsibility of an individual store owner. Putting up the signs completely agree with. But for an individual store owner or for a teenage person working in a store to have to ask a person to to put on a mask or leave, people should clearly know that they're expected to wear a mask. I just think we're setting up those individuals that are working in stores if they're having to take on some sort of a policing component to this bylaw. So I'm concerned about that part.
Oh, I understand and I, and I share those concerns. Certainly, I remember when my own kids were working the counter at, you know, some sort of a service area. It's not an easy thing at all for them, for them to be able to do that. And we don't want to put them in a, in a bad or a dangerous situation. I think I've heard Dr. Era say that as well, that, you know, we don't want anybody to be putting themselves in a risky situation because of this. So that's why the signage is there to tell people what to do. You know, staff can only ask people or remind people, but beyond that, you know, I think then at that point now, you're, you're looking at, you know, notifying someone if you feel it's important to, to get some additional assistance. Or, you know, and it may be that you are going to end up serving that person. And and then dealing with the fact that, you know, you need to make a complaint about their behavior after the fact. That may be the least risky way to handle that.
So Kim, based on those comments, could we remove the verbiage about the responsibility of the shop owner or their employee to, you know, put the sign up, but that's where their requirements end. It would be up to them to determine. Right now, though, it's written into the bylaw that there's an expectation. I personally, I'd like to see that expectation removed, but that's my thoughts.
No, that's, that's good. So let's talk about that some more. We'll, I will keep that.
Okay, thanks for that. Counselor Mackey, and I have Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, I too share the concern as it's proposed currently that the shop owners would take the, the obligation and the responsibility for individuals attending into their store to wear a mask. So if there's an opportunity to rework that, that draft section so that the onus does not fall on the shopkeepers, I would very much appreciate that. Certainly through, through this time period, I've received a number of comments from shopkeepers and that certainly is of concern to many. So if there's an ability to put the onus and the responsibility on all of us, rather than focus on the, the owners of various businesses, that would be appreciated. I also wonder if there's an ability to have a very consistent signage similar to the no smoking sign, no vaping sign. Is there an opportunity for stickers to be produced for our businesses and various, you know, even our municipalities? So I put that as a thought to take a look at and I just wanted to ensure that, that staff and local police services through our chiefs were able to comment on, on the draft bylaw, as I know you will. And thank you very much for this, Madam CIO.
Any comments on Madam CEO or?
No, certainly, I think the, you know, the assistance with signage, which is something that we did earlier on when the pandemic began and it seemed to be very well received. So I would be speaking to economic development again and see if we can't do that. If the, you know, the belief that we're likely to be in this situation, probably, you know, for another year perhaps. It seems like it would be a useful and supportive thing for the business community. And I do, you know, economic development is so dear to my heart. I, I really do take your comments about not wanting to put the business owners, especially small business owners in, in a very difficult and awkward situation. So maybe if we could go into close, Mr. Warden, and I'll let Michael make some comments of clarification because there's been an awful conversation that's gone into this.
Okay, thank you, Madam CEO. I just want to make sure there's no other questions before we go in, Madam, Madam Clerk.
There are two, Counselor Soever and Counselor Kivany.
Okay, let's get those first, Madam CEO, just to make sure. And if there are questions that need to go in camera, then they can broaden further into that. Okay, Council Soever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I'm just wondering, I think this is a great idea to have a bylaw. Certainly it allows enforcement and we don't know what the province is going to do. I'm just wondering whether it'd be a good idea since we're putting in place a bylaw to include the rules on gatherings and and so we're able to enforce those a little more strenuously, particularly it's become obvious that some people are organizing gatherings in opposition to the, the safety measures. And I'd hate to see all the hard work that our citizens have put in, in keeping us safe derailed by somebody who says, well, I don't care, I'm going to organize a party. And, you know, at least at that level, I'm not saying that we're going to go around and break up everything. But if somebody willfully organizes, you know, a gathering, you know, and first we'd try to educate. But it would be nice to have that enforcement capability if the person says, well, I don't care and gives, you know, just says, I'll do what I want. And as we don't know, the province, obviously, they've extended their, their opening for another four weeks. And, you know, it'll be interesting to see what happens because when they remove their state of emergency, a lot of these things may go by the wayside and then we'll have to scramble to figure out how we enforce things to keep our communities safe.
Okay, keep that.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kivany?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And certainly I can speak firsthand and I appreciate the comments from Counselors Mackey and Robinson in relation to small businesses because yes, I'm living that life every day and working with teenagers. And my recommendation to them is always if, if anyone is not wearing a mask and, and causes any concern whatsoever to the staff to call the OPP non-emergency number right away. But of course, the OPP can't possibly get to an establishment like mine in time to deal with anyone. They're in and out and gone. I realize there is a cost to the signage, but I do think it's important to provide a consistent signage. I know that would be a message from our recovery task force. They've been very diligent in handing out signage and floor stickers and masks and sanitizer and all those sorts of things to our businesses. And I think it would be great if the signage could be consistent and could speak to the fines so that people are aware that there is a consequence for not complying with this bylaw. So I'll leave that with you, Madam CIO. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor Kivany. I think Counselor Robinson, you had one little follow up before we go on camera.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And very quick, I do appreciate you acknowledging me. Just wondering if there may be situations where shopkeepers may not be able to wear a mask. And I'm just looking for consideration within the language as well through, through the bylaw, but certainly as this discussion is unfolding, I think that is a possibility as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other questions before we go on camera?
No, sir.
Just a comment just to you, Madam CEO, before we go in. Somewhere around the the Hollywood Square, as I'm going to call it, maybe remember back when the no smoking bylaw came in, I think it was in 99. And I know there was a bylaw from the county, I think it was bylaw something, something 99 and, and it sort of listed the bylaw. It may be stuck on some community centers back doors yet. I'm not sure, but I have seen the odd one. But it did spell out the bylaw and it spelled out the fine and it was a sticker thing that sort of was out there. And I guess maybe for that shop owner, I guess I could, if there was like a routine or a sticker system that was across the county, then everybody could point at that sticker and say, there's the sticker, there's, and then people start to see the uniformity of that. And I don't know if we have any information from anybody in the past when that bylaw came out because that was before the province passed the no smoking bylaw back in 2003. So the county had that, I think, in 99. And I guess the thing is, is the enforcement back then, if there was an establishment that people were smoking in a business, how was that dealt with? And maybe there's some, maybe there's some history that we could draw on ourselves and maybe to you, Michael, there may be some, some past archival stuff or maybe somebody who was here at that time could share some of that information as well. So sort of see how that rolled out because that was sort of a controversial thing at the time when that all came into play as well. And then I think originally the province realized that it was going to go across the board. So just as an FYI on that part for sure. Okay, so I need a mover and a second or to go in camera, please, with regards to the item that is listed in our agenda. So Counselor Robinson, I'm just taking what I see on my screen and do I have a second or?
Counselor Burley.
Counselor Burley. Counselor Potter, did you have a question before we went in? I saw something pop up there on the screen.
I did, but I think it'd probably be best if we do it in camera because it is probably a question for Michael.
All right. So then just for the viewing public, we are going in, in camera for advice subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for the purpose litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipalities or a local board. And so any discussion of going in camera, that's removed a second, all in favor? That is carried just from the viewing public. Are we looking at? Okay, welcome back everyone and to the viewing public. We're back in open session and all of the items that we went in, in close session were spoken to and only those items that were discussed and it was listed on our agenda. At this time, we're moving on our agenda to other business. And we do have a quick update with regards to the annual conference delegation updates from member of council. And there were three delegations from County Council itself. And one was broadband, one was long-term care and one was Ministry of Transportation. And I'm going to go to County Council members who were in those delegations. And first I'm going to go to Deputy Warden, Salwyn Hicks, who maybe can speak a little bit about broadband. Salwyn.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So we did have a delegation with Parliamentary Assistant Randy Pettipies. He's with the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs and the topic was, of course, broadband capacity. I also attended another meeting on the same topic with Southgate and I'll let Southgate speak to that. But on, on this particular delegation, Kim did a fantastic job. She made the presentation on our behalf. I know you were there, Mr. Warden. And she drove home a few points and just to sort of summarize, one of the issues she drove home was with respect to access to broadband in Gray County. And she made the point that we need access that's robust, that's reliable, that's affordable. And, and that high-speed internet is critical to business, education, healthcare and our overall economic sustainability. The second point that she drove home was with respect to how many people need how many people need, um, the, the access in Gray County. And, and the stat that goes with that was that 75% of Gray County does not have the standard that's been set up by the province, which is a 50-10, uh, broadband capacity, uh, standard. And there's some debate about whether or not even that standard, the 50, uh, down and 10 up, whether that is the, the standard that we should have moving, uh, forward. There'll be more on that, uh, later, but it's a debate that's happening right now. Uh, I should point out that many communities, uh, have, uh, 1 gigabyte, um, standard. You know, for example, Hanover. Um, the next point was that she drove home was with respect to SWIFT uh, and that, uh, the SWIFT initiative will get the ball rolling, but, uh, essentially it's just a tip of the iceberg. Uh, it will not make, uh, uh, you know, a meaningful, uh, difference when you look at the problem in its totality. And lastly, that our agricultural, uh, sector relies more and more on advanced, uh, technologies and requires, uh, high-capacity, uh, broadband service, uh, to operate properly. So broadband has essentially become a must-have rather than this sort of a concept of a luxury. It's no longer just a luxury. Kim reinforced our support for SWIFT 2.0 and the SWIFT model in general. Um, and, uh, SWIFT 2.0, uh, just to summarize, would focus on fiber, uh, rather than wireless. And it would also focus on, uh, lower-density, uh, areas. Uh, and it will do, do so by increasing the incentive, uh, to ISPs from 67% to 83%. In summary, the meeting went very, very well. I think that the, uh, presentation was well-received. The Parliamentary Assistant, um, made some, I, I thought favorable, uh, remarks in response. That's it, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much for that, uh, very thorough, uh, delegation report. Very good. Uh, the next delegation we had was with regards to long-term, long-term care. And I know Jennifer Cornell sort of led that delegation, but I think John Woodbury, this is that time you were going to speak?
Yeah, I warned you earlier, so, uh, it's fair game. Um, if we're gonna do this really brief, Jennifer did a great job. That was it. Um, but I could give you a bit more than that. Uh, ours was with Minister Fulton and, uh, went really well. Jennifer's, uh, first time, uh, delegating, uh, at, uh, AMO conference like that, and she did a fantastic job with it. Talked about our long-term, uh, care strategies as far as how we've kept COVID free and things. Uh, we're looking at, um, uh, just continued diligence and looking, wanting, uh, support for the, uh, July 30th Long-Term Care Staffing Study that recommends, uh, more development of health and human resources. We talked about how we had had, um, uh, others in to help out and, uh, the idea of having, uh, staff that wasn't PSW but was able to assist. Um, and, uh, looking at different ratios, uh, so that we could, uh, do that and, and give more, uh, time to residents. Talked a little bit about, uh, some guidance for, uh, the new developments and redevelopments. Uh, and, uh, and some of the structures to do with, with some of the different things. So that's just a real quick get Brian to lunch update. Uh, and, uh, I think it was received very well. They're very interested in making, uh, more contact and following up on some things. So, uh, I think it was a good, a good contact overall and, uh, continue to move forward with it.
Okay, well, thank you. And I know there was other councils. I know Counselor Robinson was, was part of a number of those delegations and others, but, uh, just moving things along here. And then we also have a delegation with the Ministry of Transportation. And I think, uh, Counselor Soever, you're gonna sort of report on that delegation.
Yes, thank you. And, and recognizing the, um, urgency of, of, of some people leaving, I'll start with the transportation issues in the town, in the Gray County area, started with the Queens Bush Road in 18. No, actually, we'll just go right to the deputation. Um, the, uh, certainly, we, we had a very good deputation with the Minister of Transport. Uh, she, she's very engaged. Uh, we talked about the traffic issues, not only on Highway 26 corridor and the Highway 6 and 10 corridor, and the need for an integrated regional transportation strategy, recognizing that, um, and everything, um, that comes up here starts out in the GTA and travels through the, a lot of it travels through the Central District and, and gets here. And, um, so the two transportation strategies need to be integrated. The minister is, is well aware of that. She, she indicated she knew that there was an issue with silos and that, you know, based on the meeting that we had in March, uh, she, she had gotten some feedback on that. She wasn't able to attend that meeting, but certainly, uh, she understood the concept of silos and the need to, um, the need, need to integrate those studies and, and the importance of the traffic issues on Highway 26 and 6 and 10, particularly to the, um, development of Owen Sound. Because, um, obvious, we did mention to her that it almost takes as long to get from the east end of Toronto to Owen Sound now as it does to go from there to North Bay. So, uh, we're, we're not central Ontario, I guess, anymore because it's pretty far north. Um, so we, we did talk about that. Since the time of the meeting, we did invite the minister up here and she indicated that either she or Parliamentary Assistant would try to make a trip up here. I've followed up with letters from the Town of Blue Mountains, making sure that, uh, you know, we keep that initiative alive. There, thus seemed to be a willingness to come up here. And I guess the, the hope would be that it would be at least a full day and we would drive the Parliamentary Assistant, uh, through along Highway 26 to Owen Sound, maybe have lunch there in the presentation and then go down 6 and 10 to Shelburne and, uh, leave that way so that, you know, the, uh, minister or the Parliamentary Assistant would get a, a real, uh, in-person view of, of the issues, uh, as we drive along.
Okay, and, uh, thank you for that. And certainly, uh, that's something that, uh, Madam C- CIO and I are gonna have a meeting part next week to talk about the next strategies on that delegation as well because it's very important to get her up here to see the traffic that is, has been up here and still continuing to be up here and certainly both from those two corridors that you've spoken to. I will ju- just briefly, briefly, uh, being a Western, on the Western Wardens Caucus, we also had a delegation with about 11 ministers and it was a little longer with regards to our timeframe, I don't know, about 40 minutes. And, um, one of the, again, the biggest highlight is Jim Ginn, who, who is the Western Ontario Wardens Chair, led that delegation. But one of the main things again was broadband. And I know, and, and Deputy Mayor, uh, Hicks said about this, about the 50-10, but it's still being emphasized that fiber and it's, it's still, um, where a lot of these counties would like to see because it's, you know, the, the 50-10 is sort of that CRTC, CRTC guidelines up to 2030. But as we know, broadband is going to continue to be more and more of an issue. So fiber is still going to be, uh, a, a desirable outcome in the sense of moving forward to the next speed levels that we want to have in play. Just on AMO itself, I want to congratulate, uh, Christine Robinson. She was elected, uh, to, uh, the Rural Caucus of AMO. And, uh, she, uh, she put her name forward and she went to the election as, 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 uh, part of that process and she was elected, uh, to that. And again, congratulations. Part of that, as you're probably aware, I was also, uh, acclaimed on the County Caucus of, of AMO. So both her and myself will be, uh, be working hard to represent our area as far as, uh, representation on AMO. And from my County Caucus, uh, meeting, I was elected Chair of County Caucus, which then will also, uh, put me into the executive, uh, of AMO along with the MOU meeting. So I'll have those opportunities to follow up with a number of ministers as well and to, so if there are certain things that are needed highlighted here in, in the County of Gray, certainly, uh, between Christine and I, you know, we can certainly try to, uh, follow up through those channels to, um, bring those issues forward. From that, I don't know if there, okay, the last point of the agenda. I don't know, is there any questions with regards to the AMO conference? I, I felt, uh, those that attended, I think it was very well done considering the, the virtual part of it. Uh, three days in a row, they had ministers that were available to answer questions. It was sort of like three days of a bear pit, but they were sort of not all at one spot. And, and so, um, that was available and the concurrent sessions were very good, those that followed along. And there were some chat sessions as well, if you wanted to get into the chat forum. But considering what, uh, you know, this year with the COVID-19, it was, it's certainly, I think, best to be expected to what was there. And I think the outcomes were very, were very, were very well. Any notice of motions?
I have one, Mr. Warden.
I, Counselor Millen, go ahead.
I'll be bringing a motion forward to, uh, ask County Council to consider, uh, changing the start time of our meetings to 10 o'clock.
Okay, well you'll.
In the hopes that the Chair will not let the meeting drag on like he has today.
I, I didn't even give you a lunch.
You didn't give us a whole lot, except a lot of, uh, discussion.
There you go. Okay, thank you for that, uh, Counselor Millen. Um, is there any, uh, you'll be in, uh, communication with the, uh, the clerk on that?
Madam Clerk, I look forward to chatting with her.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, we won't go to touch that one. All right, are there any other notice of motions? I thought I heard another voice in the background.
Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I'll be bringing a notice of motion that, um, we make sure that the effects of COVID-19 are included in the new, uh, Growth Management Study. Um, we just started, uh, we preliminary results of our own survey here indicate a huge percentage of the people with secondary residences are planning to move here in the next year. And I think it's vital that we understand that. Currently, we also have, from what I hear, I don't have final numbers yet, but over 200 people on the waiting list for our school. So I think we're seeing something that we haven't seen before. And I think it's very important that we include that in the Growth Management Study.
Okay. Uh, any, are there any other notice of motions?
Mr. Warden, I have Counselor Desai's hand up too.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Warden. I just, uh, and I know Counselor Mill is, uh, is my, my, the honorable, uh, member from Southgate. He's a very intelligent man, but, uh, just in case it does slip, uh, his attention. I just wanted to make sure that we, we, we draft the motion such that it can be ratified at the next meeting itself. There is a section of the procedural bylaw, and I forget which one it is, but the clerk, uh, the clerk will be on top of it even if Counselor Mill isn't, uh, dreaming up of his airport. Anyways, thank you for that.
I can't hear anything from Desai. I don't know what's going on.
I will.
I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you wanna hear much from me. You've been accusing, uh, the Warden of dragging the meeting too long.
I look forward to in-person meetings.
Okay, um, any, are there any other notice of motions? I'm glad everybody has a sense of humor still. That's great. Are there any other notice of motions? Uh, I'm just gonna make a comment to, uh, Counselor Millen is, if we keep getting notice of motions, you may want to start the meeting at, at 7 o'clock. All right. Seeing there's no other notice of motions, uh, I have a motion to adjourn, which is moved by Counselor Burley and second by Counselor O'Leary. Uh, anybody opposed to that? If not, that is carried. Everybody have a great day and thanks for your indulgence. And, uh, you know, it's good that we have a sense of humor.